I'm gonna call this, it is February 10th, 2021. I'm gonna call this meeting with Gloucester School Committee to order. The mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful engaged lifelong learners. This meeting is recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 10 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or a device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak during all communications. Please use either of these operations to be recognized to speak. And Maria, can we have a roll call for attendance?
Certainly. Ms. Weason.
Here.
Kathy Clancy.
Here.
Mr. Favazza.
Here.
Chairman Pope.
Here.
Ms. Prince.
Here.
Mayor Taken.
Here.
And Ms. Watson.
She'll be here in a few minutes. She's having internet problems.
Okay.
And in addition to the school committee members, we are joined by Superintendent Ben Lummis, Principal Cook from the high school, Athletic Director Brian LaFatta, our CFO Gary Frisch, Assistant Superintendent Greg Bach, and as well as our two, Anne Jeff Paco, our head nurse, and as well as our two student representatives, Mia Wheeler and Megan Slufa. So with that being said, I'm going to ask you all to join me with the salute to the flag. Okay, Maria, I need you-
Yep, hold on one second, Jonathan. Okay, you should be all set.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next order of business is oral communications. If there's anybody here who would like to address the school committee, okay, I'll just start from the beginning. I always get this wrong. The public shall have the opportunity at every regular school committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Oral communication shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to the proper subcommittee. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public may address the committee with the permission of the chair. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each and shall submit a copy of the prepared communication to the recording secretary. The school committee chair shall not allow complaints as to individual performance or character. That being said, is there anybody who would like to speak under oral communications? Seeing none, we will move on. I will close oral communications and we will move on to the next order of business. Comments for the shared person. I would just like to, once again, this is somewhat of a recognition, but I'd just like to acknowledge that yesterday, well, today, yesterday was our 90th day of in-person classes. And I would like to just once again, give the credit where the credit is due to the administration, the teachers, the nurses, the, all the other staff, the bus drivers, as well as DPW and, and the support we've gotten from the health department and from all of the support that we've got from the administration of the city. It wouldn't be possible without any one of those elements doing everything that needs to be done. And to have had kids in school for now 91 days is a feat that is not matched by very many other communities in this state as well as in the country. So congratulations to all, everybody for, for the effort to keep the kids in school, which we all know is important and beneficial to all students. Recognitions. Melissa.
Thank you. I want to recognize the message that City Council President Steve LeBlank gave last night at the city council meeting, at the end of the meeting. He praised, well, it wasn't a praise, but it was a request to anyone that could help. I think specifically he asked the mayor that we do whatever possible messaging we can to get our staff vaccinated. Like you just said, we're one of the only few communities that have been in school for 90 days. And if they're in school, in my opinion, they're a priority and they should be vaccinated. So I don't know if there's anything the committee can do, but I just wanted to recognize his message and hopefully make it our message from the school committee to get our staff vaccinated as soon as possible.
Any other recognitions?
Well, I want to jump on that. I think that we should send a letter from the school committee saying, you know what? You put your trust in us. We put it in our teachers. I don't know about, you know, like I said, people might be getting offended when I'm going to say, but right now I care about our teachers. I care about the teachers who, school bus drivers, the coaches, who've been actively enrolled with the children, one-on-one in those bubbles, that they should be vaccinated. You know, if he wants to split them up, saying the ones who are doing home remote, well, that's fine. But the ones who are in school, who've been there from day one, they asked us, they said, please do it, you know, we worked diligently, all some along. And I have to say, the people on the negotiation team and everything else was doing great. You know what? The teachers had faith in us and now they're still having faith in us to go forward because some of these things we're going to be discussing tonight. If our teachers or coaches or whatever got vaccinated, we wouldn't be having this problem. And I'm not saying that they should be ahead of anyone, but they should have been on at least for front liners in the bottom or even with the 75 plus and to still continue that like on a hold period until we can do that. Don't get me wrong, you know how much I love my seniors. I still volunteer, I was there last Friday. But the fact is, my teachers have to know, enough is enough. Because if we keep waiting, it's not going to be, you know what? What's the sense? It could be the end of school year by the time everyone's done. So we need, we need to, we need, I really think, I think we should have a vote. I think we should send a letter and follow in the superintendent because, you know, saying, and he can send it and we can send it because saying, you know what? We invite you to come to visit our schools on March 1st. We'll be 100 days. I know you're considering, but when you do consider, consider also the options of looking at the teachers and congratulate them, but also say, you know what? I have some good news. You'll be able to get vaccinated. So that'd be kind of cool. Thank you.
Okay. Let's bring that up under action. Okay. Samantha.
I just want to congratulate the Favazza family on the birth of a new baby girl.
And yours eyes are open. Good, good for you. Congratulations, Joel.
Great news.
Well, he said it. If we're building new schools, he's going to fill them.
Any other recognitions? Then we'll move on to our Student Advisory Council, Megan and Mia. I don't know which, I have some special instructions of something to share. So give me the high sign when you want me to put the poster up.
Hello, everyone. So for a quick sports update, we have the swim and dive team is currently undefeated and the girls hockey team played a fantastic game against with a final four, six, four, which is a great way, I'm assuming, if I do say so myself. And due to the increased absences this week, we have decided to postpone secret pals until the week after vacation because it just wouldn't be right if a lot of kids weren't here. And the GHS Health Center in collaboration with the Youth Peace Movement has been working on highlighting inspirational role models for Black History Month. Photos and bios have been posted on the bulletin board across from the Health Center. And that's all I have for tonight. So I'm going to hand it up to Meg to wrap it up.
Hi, everyone. So I'm going to start off with news from the class of 2023. The sophomores did extremely well on their calendar raffles they just did. They raised around $4,000, which was crazy. That was very, we're very proud of them. The class of 2022, today in school, they handed out their Valentine carnation and teddy bears, which was really nice, as many teachers sent them to other teachers and students sent them to teachers. So it just brought some cheer and happiness into the building. From student council, we had all student council meeting last week with excellent attendance. We got a lot of stuff accomplished. From NHS, they also had a meeting last week. And since the students cannot do the open door, which is a part of their service hours, they were now helping at the free food locker. And it allows NHS students to volunteer after school. And there are so many families utilizing this, so so much food is being distributed. News from our music. Our senior Ivan DeMargeon was recently selected into the Massachusetts All-State Jazz Ensemble for saxophone. Only 17 students are selected into this ensemble from a pool of hundreds of high school musicians all across Massachusetts. So we're extremely proud of him. And the GHS Music Department recently received new technology materials provided by Gloucester Education Foundation, which included a computer, some microphone, and some other pieces of tech that will aid us in creating more high-quality content like our performances and YouTube shows like Fishin' Fridays and music trivia. From drama, so Jonathan, if you want to share that poster. GHS Theaters streaming our first pandemic play called the radio play Disaster. The show will be streaming online this week from Thursday, February 11th through Saturday, February 13th. They've been working hard using camera kits from the Gloucester Education Foundation to organize, record, and edit videos as part of their performance. The show will be available on demand streaming tomorrow, Thursday, February 11th through Saturday on Broadway On Demand and offering unlimited on-demand viewings for the play. It's only $10. And then on the little link next to that QR code, that's how you will find and view the play. And then finally, I would like to give some recognitions from GHS. First, I would like to give recognition to Ms. Menery, who, in my opinion, the school would not function without her. She is amazing. She helps students. She helps student council. She helps NHS, anyone and everyone. She's on top of them and she is just amazing. One of our senior students, Dylan Orlando, he goes above and beyond. He comes into school for both cohorts, even when he doesn't have to just do the announcements. And he even has gone as far as doing announcements in both English and Spanish for some of our students who have some trouble understanding. And then finally, trap it all up. I'd like to give thanks to the English and guidance departments because right now for seniors, we are very stressed out with scholarships and they have just been super helpful and super nice in calming our nerves and keeping us all sane. So thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Joel?
Thanks. Megan, I'm not sure if you know the answer, but I think this is the second year in a row that GHS has sent someone to the All-State Jazz Ensemble. Do you know if that's correct? I think we sent a senior the last year also.
I think we did. I'm not entirely sure.
Yeah, I love it. Anyway, that's a huge accomplishment for Ivan and it's a great thing for the high school that I think he's the second of two in two years to be picked for this elite group. So that's-
Yes, it's crazy. Very proud of him.
I believe Asha Egmont went last year, trombone player.
Any other questions? I will, I will send that poster to Laura, who can put it up on our website as well as on the, our Facebook page. And we should ask people in the community, make sure that people in the community know that, that they have this opportunity to view the video that's been created by the drama department. Joel?
So I know that obviously the, the actors were all from the student body. Was it also recorded and produced by the student body, edited and everything, all by students?
Yes, everything was done by students. We had some help from the teachers, Ms. Kirk and our music teacher, but pretty much everything was done by the students.
That's really awesome. So in addition to those actors, people like Tree Lee Dowd, who have been behind the scenes, I think it's really cool.
Laura?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we have been posting about it and about, on our, on our Gloucester School Committee Facebook group and also about some of the behind the scenes, but we'll keep, we'll keep putting it out there.
Okay, great, great. Anything else of the students? Seeing none. Thank you very much and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you, guys.
Next, Mia.
Next order of business is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody would like to remove for additional
I love that we approved the consent agenda.
Second.
Second. Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy. Oh, I think we lost Kathy. Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
And Mayor Taken.
Yes.
Okay, passes six in favor and one lost in the snow in upstate New York. And we'll move on to deliberations on educational issues and I will turn it over to Superintendent Lummis.
Maria, I vote yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jonathan. Everyone, folks at home. So we'll give you an update on a few things tonight. Second here. I'll give you an update on our typical update on COVID in schools in the city. We'll have a winter athletics update from Brian LaFatta, myself, and then also give you an update on the FY22 budget. That's a presentation. I'll also give a quick update on the, on the, in the, in the beginning part there about COVID. I'll give folks an update on pool testing quickly and then also just a reminder about vaccinations to just, just be quick. So let me share my screen. There we go. Melissa, you can see that? Or Jonathan? Great. So that's just the agenda. So, oh, sorry. So just in terms of citywide data, Karen Carroll's not able to join us tonight. I think we get her about once a month, which is, which has been great. But I spoke to her again today and spoke to her a few times this week, a couple times this week. So you can see right now on the last line, there are active cases across the city. You're 60. And also you see again, as I remind folks, the, the sort of fluctuation up and down. So we are below that just before Thanksgiving, but then have been up and down since then. But you will see that since our last meeting, especially over the last, you know, you know, four weeks, just a significant drop or really, you know, just just a much better drop. That reflects, you know, what Massachusetts is doing and in the whole country. But we're surely doing better than we were last, two weeks ago and a lot better than we were four weeks ago. So that's great stuff. And we currently have nine active cases in the schools. That was down as low as four active cases on Friday, just last Friday, the 5th. Had a total of 119 cases and 110 of those have been resolved, obviously. Still having very few close contacts in our schools because, because staff or students have been out and already quarantined typically. This past week, which we'll explain more, talk about more tonight, is COVID impacted our winter athletics and, and, and learning at, sorry, learning at GHS this week. And so we'll talk more about that in a little bit. This is where the cases were two weeks ago at the last school committee meeting and then now in terms of active cases. So we had 11 two weeks ago. Now we have nine. As I said, that's, that's fluctuating up and down to as low as four on Friday and now back up to nine. So. But obviously, it's a, it's a overall, you know, great trend for the high school, which is typical. You know, we've seen more at the high school than we have in other places. What the good news here is O'Malley's at zero. So it's, it's often around two, three, four, sometimes five, but it's at zero, which is, which is good news for O'Malley. That is not something we need to go on. So stop, just really want to encourage school committee members of the public. I'll most likely be communicating with families and staff before we go on February vacation to just stop the spike. We've seen whether it is Thanksgiving break, December break, spikes have, have come at, for the city and the schools come after those and really want to encourage folks to, to not have another spike and do what you can. So as we reminded people before, Chris, December break, our protocols work in school and they work out of school. So that's about masks and face coverings, hand hygiene, staying away from people you don't live with and just really try to encourage people to minimize travel as much as you can. I know I love to ski. I'm not skiing this year. It breaks my heart, but I do want to make sure that my family's safe, my colleagues are safe and the schools are safe. And we really, I really urge folks to, to put a limit on that and don't travel unless you have to. If you do travel, return on time and make sure you schedule tests prior to the end of vacation so you can return on time to school and to work. So. But really encourage folks to, to help Gloucester, you know, prevent another spike. Pool, quick pool update and pool testing. So we're moving ahead and making some progress this week. Department of Education, Department of Health do keep on shifting things a little bit for us, but that's all right. We're pretty flexible. We're going to participate in the DESI six-week, six-week pilot program where most of those costs are supported by the Department of Education. We also have some, some funding through some grants that'll cover that as well, so it won't come after, come out of our operating budget. We will start with GHS and O'Malley students and staff and with this pilot. There's a more regular number of positive cases there. Those older students, as we know, are most likely had transmission. They haven't had much transmission at all, but that's where it's more likely to happen. We want to assess the efficacy of the program. We want to assess if it's actually helping us with new information and more information. It may, it may, it may not. We don't know until we try. But we do want to, you know, we have the opportunity to do this with our staff and students at these two schools. That's what we can get funding for. That's what we can staff. It's, as I've said before, it's very complicated to, to pull this off. I'll talk about that in a moment. And just O'Malley and GHS families should look for information coming in the next couple of days and throughout vacation and the next week about consent. Folks do have to consent for their, their children get, to get tested and all. And then also staff have to consent as well. That can be done primarily electronically, but we also have paper translated forms as well. But that's, that's the next step and that's actually going to be pretty challenging to get as many people as possible to consent. It's just, it's just, it's just a process that takes a bunch of communication and follow-through and, and won't be as simple as, as, as anyone would like it to be. So just the next piece here is where are we now? We're, so we're working with Bowport Ambulance. We may be able to create a contract with them, which will do most of the administration on testing. We still need, do need to hire a coordinator, but we're closing in on that, we think. Someone who will work with Jeff Paco to oversee the program and make sure the follow-up testing is happening. That we're working with the state and the state and the platform from our providers that we're working closely and working well with Bowport. But that's a significant help to us is being able to work with Bowport. Their testers are experienced. They can come in for, you know, a couple of days at O'Malley, a couple of days at GHS. Sorry. So obviously I mentioned the communication to the families. We'll have to have a lot more of that in the coming couple of weeks. We're expecting the launch immediately after February break and we'll probably launch, you know, sort of soft launch pretty slowly. But we'll add people every week as we get more and more approvals and consents from families. Just what, this was already in the, in the presentation. Just want to highlight where we are in terms of just the state priorities. You can see the state is still with the age 75 and plus. That's happening now and, and from just what I read in the papers at least, accelerating. But you can see that K to 12 staff and others are now to, you know, number three of phase two. And so I fully, fully support and would be happy to sign on a letter the school committee wants to write about advocating for more, for more testing. I've done that with North Shore superintendents and union leaders and happy to do that, do that with all of you as well. So. But this is just sort of where things are right now, not necessarily where they should be. So we want to move towards update on athletics from Brian LaFatta, Athletic Director. He's going to tell you about some, I mean, we've, we've had very good successes all throughout the season and Brian will help update you on those. And then also we do have a current COVID situation with a couple of sports, which we'll have to dive in a little bit deeper and I'll help with that. So Brian, all yours. Just tell me when to switch the slides.
All righty. Thank you, Ben. Thank you, everybody, for, for having me on tonight. Appreciate it. Just want to give you a quick update on how the winter season has been going up to this point. Obviously, last time I was here was the beginning of December, December 14th. We started this winter season and we're up till now February 10th with 11 days left in the winter season. December 14th, we were one of the first schools in the area to start winter sports. So we were very fortunate to be able to practice through the entire December break and start playing competitions in early January. At this point now, between our nine teams that were active this winter, we've played approximately 65 games or meets between gymnastics and swim and about 350 team practices at this point over the two months. We've had very few individual student athletes quarantine due to being considered close contacts up until this past week or so. Just a few close contacts considered by who they were sitting near in some classrooms earlier in the winter and a few close contacts due to family members. But all in all, it's been a very successful winter when it comes to that as far as not having teams quarantine. We did have one team early on. One of our teams that we do co-op with another school, we did have one positive case. So there was a very brief pause with that team. But as I mentioned, with all the team practices and games and everything, we've had, it's been very successful up to this point. Big thank you of that goes to really everyone involved. Student athletes have been great. The coaches, it's been very challenging. Veteran coaches that are used to doing sports one way, things have changed a lot. Our limited spectators, our immediate family members that we have been allowed to have come into sporting events, Talbot Rink or the Field House, game day workers, athletic staff. Everyone's been tremendous with the protocols and guidelines, things such as obviously staying socially distanced everywhere, whether it's at practice, at games, when spectators do show up, spacing out in the stands at the various venues. The student athletes every day having to perform a daily COVID screening when they step into any of our facilities, if they step onto the bus, taking daily temperatures, the coaches are in charge of. Coming to events and getting on buses, fully dressed for their games, basically. Typically, they're used to going to a locker room wherever they go. But now they have to, especially hockey players have the majority of their uniform on when they enter a rink, they enter the bus, everything. So it is much, much different now for a lot of these athletes. Wearing masks at all times, that's the obvious one. And I'll tell you, especially for some of these hockey players and basketball players, it's difficult. I mean, I breathe heavy just walking down the hallway here with my mask on and seeing these athletes going up and down the ice of the basketball court is, it's impressive. And it's a challenge, but they've been doing well. I know they get sick of hearing from me once in a while when I see the nose start to peek out from, from over their mask, but they've done a great job. And then dealing with spacing issues has been changes to the game as far as the bench area and everything. And as well, as I said, some of our athletic staff, this year we've done more laundry as an athletic department than we ever have. Typically, kids will go home and they wash their own uniforms or they're responsible to. And to say, maybe I don't trust them all quite enough to wash all their stuff that Pat Barry, our Assistant Athletic Director, has been unbelievable with the amount of hockey uniforms, practice uniforms every day at basketball, collecting the practice tank tops. We did have our local repairman have to come in to fix up our washing machine because we've used it so much this winter. But it's something that everyone's been willing to do for the season. As far as our facilities go, I've stressed it before, we are so lucky, our student athletes and our community with two of the facilities we have, especially right now. Obviously, our new renovated field house, plenty of room in there to space people out, space the teams out and the fact that it just looks unbelievable. Obviously, our new renovated field house, plenty of room in there to space people out, space the teams out and the fact that it just looks unbelievable right now. Every visiting team that's come in. Has been nothing but appreciative and just enlightened with ecstatic with how good it looks, the basketball court, the new bleachers, the track. So. It's unfortunate, obviously, we don't have a nice full capacity crowd to watch it games this year, but. The spacing there is, it makes our lives much easier to be able to safely play these games. Talbot Rank is the other one. I don't know how many people are lucky enough to realize how how nice that facility is in all of the North Shore and probably more of Eastern Mass. The size of Talbot Rank to be able to fit teams safely space them out to to be able to put some of their equipment on prior to a game. The bench areas to be able to extend our benches much further along to to fit the teams, a lot of. Nightmares that have been heard about from whether it's high school or college or youth levels is hockey ranks that just don't have much room in them. And that's been a sport under scrutiny throughout this entire COVID, but at Talbot Rank, the DPW. The staff at Talbot is amazing with mopping the floor between periods between every group that comes in there. Spraying down all the benches and everything, the bleachers. So we are very lucky for that and unfortunate. Actually, Ben, if you can flip to the next two slides just quick for one second to kind of give you an idea of one of the changes. They're not the greatest pictures. I did take them from some of our live streams from Cape Van Live, but this right here is a picture of our hockey bench. This right here, if I'm not much, I'm not a full fledged hockey guy at all by any means, but for this right here is very difficult to do for teams. Typically, you see a hockey bench and they're shoulder to shoulder, sitting on top of each other, jumping over the boards constantly next to each other. Our team, Coach Geary, his staff and these players have done so much. You can see all the players off to the extended part on the right behind the glass. Where we've spread kids out to get as far away as possible. Every visiting team that comes in, I grab them, I grab their coaches, I explain to them, we've got a facility like this, we need to do this. So this right there, something like this is, you don't see this often at many ranks. A lot of ranks are having issues with this where at our rank, it's been something that that we've. Been on top of the entire time. And like I said, the players and the coaches, it's difficult for these kids that have been growing up their whole lives playing where they're just used to being shoulder to shoulder and. Bumping next to each other in the in the bench area. They've done a great job as well as, like I said, Coach Geary and his staff. And even our girls coach, our new varsity team, Coach Burnick and her staff. The next picture as well, Ben, is. Just to give you an idea of what basketball looks like right now in the field house. Some of you that might watch college basketball see it where we've got chairs six feet apart. Multiple rows for the girls team. There's three rows for some of the boys and visiting teams. There's four rows deep of chairs. And then a coach is used to usually having a team, one tight line of chairs next to each other to talk strategy or be able to lean over and talk to a kid. It's not like that right now. And. As I said, the athletes, the coaches have done a good job working with this. Obviously, in basketball, you can see them with all their masks on, on the court, on the bench, whatever it might be. So. As I said, this is something we're very lucky to have these two facilities in addition to obviously Newell Stadium. So, Ben, if you want to go back to the first slide, thank you. Next thing is is the current COVID situation. Just briefly for for some of you have an idea of what's going on, our boys and varsity and JV hockey programs are currently on a pause. We have thirty six players and four coaches total in the program. There are actually a few more players, but thirty six players and four coaches. To my record that have had to quarantine in the past few days due to a close contact situation. As I mentioned before, we have gone a whole season. Very fortunate to a point, but we've worked hard at it compared to the majority of other programs. The first case that did come out of this was somebody, we've done a very good job of trying to separate all programs, any program that has multiple teams. We're not moving kids up and down from varsity teams, JV teams, we're trying to prevent the co-mingling as much as possible to prevent situations of whole programs. Unfortunately, one of the individuals is someone that we needed to have go back and forth for a few days and of course with just the way luck has it. That this was one of the individuals to test positive, unfortunately, and it could have been anyone. But this one here is why it affected the larger part of a program. A lot of times teams, it might be just a JV team or just a varsity team, but this one did affect our, the majority of our program. So that's where we are with that program. The other one is the girls varsity basketball. With the end of last week, played an opponent at an away game and the next day I did receive a call from the. Fellow athletic director that one of their players had tested positive. So any of our players on the immediate court that played in that game. Were deemed close contacts as well. So as you've seen, it's it's very limited to the amount of cases we've had or some of it's been out of our control. And that's what's happened over the past week and a half. Just an overview of the conference, our northeastern conference, we have ten teams participating this winter. With the nine other schools added in, there's been approximately thirty team momentary pauses like that we are currently in now. Up to this point, we only had the one brief one very early on with one team. A lot of the schools are anywhere from three to four, three to five. Various teams they've had take pauses, stop playing for anywhere from. Eight to ten to fourteen days. So Gloucester's been very fortunate. There's been many people I've talked to a lot of times saying, up until last Friday, I was. Constantly saying, I'm knocking on wood, but things have been very, very good for our athletic program. I was typing an email Friday evening, getting ready to email all of our families, more or less with like a two minute warning or a two week notice that. We had two weeks left in our winter season and things had been going great. Unfortunately, the next morning we did have these few teams that had the situation. So. That email didn't go out, but it was that close that things have been going very, very well considering. And like I said, the entire staff. The student body, the coaches, everyone has a tremendous job up to this point. With the winter sports season. So that's where I just want to come in and give you guys an an update of where everything's at as far as athletics.
Great. Thank you, Brian. I'm going to just give folks the update on the on the sort of COVID situation, specifically the boys hockey, because this is a little more involved at this point. So there's the original case which Brian talked about, there are three total positives now coming from those close contacts. There are forty close contacts from the original case, the earliest they could return to school. Is two eleven and two twelve, if they get tested at the five day mark, otherwise it's later than that. That's of course tomorrow, the next day. But they'd have to have a test a couple of days ago and absolutely no symptoms. So that that's the earliest anybody could come back to school. Okay? In a situation like this, we can consult with the Mass State Epidemiologist, which we did earlier this week and on ongoing and also did Gloucester Department of Health, obviously, because this is concerning. The state epidemiologist. Has determined this to be an active cluster. An active cluster is a sort of thing that happens at a business, organization could be a school. You know, where there's a significant number of cases that they essentially keep an eye on it from the state level. This is a, this is a considerably small active cluster, you know, ones can be much bigger than this, obviously, much more severe. But they have determined to be an active cluster. What that, one of the things that means is that. The program or like, like in the case of a business, a business that had to be paused until the Department of Health determines that the cluster is resolved. And and just a few, few pieces on that, what that means. And this is all coming from a conversation I had with Karen Carroll earlier today. That no, we're, we're, we're sure no further transmission is happening. Okay. So no further tests come back positive. You know, the tests are still, we've just reached the mark where folks are having tests in the in the in the hockey case. And and so, so we don't know that yet, whether there'd be any further positives. Okay. So we're looking for that. Department of Health is looking for that. It could be at least fourteen days. From the original positive case, February seventeenth, but I will say that's a, that's, you know, this is developing situation. We need Department of Health needs to get, you know, continue to get more information about it. And so it really depends on any further positives, but also really what the, what the. Department of Health says in terms of, are they, you know, are they sure the the class, the cluster is resolved? And the last piece of that, one of the other things they would do is as they would do with a, you know, a business or a school is they would, you know, come and review the. The protocols and probably meet with the team as well to provide, provide suggestions. I mean, Brian's already, you know, thinking about, you know, one in particular that would, you know, eliminate movement of coaches, obviously, but um. And then so the challenging piece in this is this is the timing and the timing of the season, you know, whereas other programs. You know, had a pause and maybe did have other cases. We have a pause, we have initial case, we have additional cases and then we're approaching the end of the season very rapidly. So literally, it may be that they're paused until after the last scheduled game for junior varsity and it could be paused until just about. You know, just about the last games for the varsity. Another thing that's very, very important here and James Cook is here to answer questions about it is, you know, there's been a significant impact on the high school this week with, you know, up to thirty six students out from one thirty six plus nine. You know, forty five students out just related to athletics. It has an impact on those children's learning, obviously, has an impact on teachers in terms of what they're able to do and try to do to support those kids while they're out. And also, I mean, I think you even heard it, heard it tonight from Mia's update was, you know, also postponing something that. You know, activity there. At the high school because of increased absences. So there's a, you know, impact on the students, obviously, the risk of health that we're concerned about and the department health is concerned about. And that's why they have this, this, you know, they have to make sure the. Active clusters resolved. So there's a concern of health and safety, there's concern about learning, obviously, for these students. And there's also concern about. Impacting the high school and the staff there. I will say this, you know, one of the challenges with hockey specifically is. It's an all or nothing case in terms of close contacts. The protocols for hockey, as we explained to you in December, I believe. Is that if if anybody who's on the team or on the ice at any time, if there's a positive, see a player case. From both teams is then is then considered a close contact. So we do have, well, in many ways, this is up to the Department of Health to figure out when we could come back. We've got real concerns about. Continuing on and putting another week or so of school jeopardy for 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 these athletes and these student athletes. So I'll pause there and and and. And stop the share to see if there are questions for folk from folks.
Well, Melissa, you had a question?
I do. I might have two, but they're brief questions. Thank you. First, I just want to recognize we have Derek Gary with us tonight. I see him as an attendee. I want to thank him. He's one of the hockey coaches. Pat Barry is here and I recognize a lot of hockey families that are watching this tonight. So I just want to. Everyone to realize that people are tuning into this conversation. So my question to the superintendent, you were talking about testing. And we don't have all the results back yet. Are we tracking who? Who you do have the results for and who you don't, because it's my understanding, because I've heard from many hockey parents today. That the parents went out and had their children tested right away and most of them up, from what I hear, they're all coming back negative with the exception of the ones you reported. Tonight. So is there still a large group that we don't know whether they're positive or not, or do we feel, are we in the position where we've gotten most of the results back already? Or do you not know?
So a couple of, we don't have most, we don't have most of the results back.
We do or you don't. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Not at this point. And part of that's just timing. So if someone had a PCR test on Tuesday, which is what I think one of the first days they could really take a test. You know, results may not come back till tomorrow, that sort of thing. So. Another piece is we don't, you know, we, so we are asking and we want folks, families to let our nurses know. The other piece is folks don't have to get tested. They can wait out the whole quarantine period. That's up to them. We can't force folks to do that. And the last piece is, I will say this, though, that's very important if, is if. Folks are coming back on the earlier timetable. So tested five days, returned eight days, I believe. We absolutely do have to have the results of the test in order to make sure those kids, you know, if they come back to school, they have been tested and it's been negative. So that's really. Paramount for parents to to share that with us if they're going to come back on the earlier timeframe, which means tomorrow or the next day. But we don't have all the tests back at this point. Not, not at all.
Thank you. And my second question, probably Brian would know better on this. And thank you, Brian, for always coming here and giving us great reports. I appreciate everything that you do for. Athletics in our school. So the hockey schedule, it's my understanding there's a game scheduled Saturday. Is it most likely that that game will be canceled just because of the testing issue? And then I just have another question about the schedule going forward. It seems like we only have a couple of games left. Are those planned to be canceled if the kids can't come back in time or is there an ability to reschedule? So that the students can finish out the season.
At this point now, I've kept everything on the schedule from this Saturday on, just because I was waiting for for further details from the state and everything. So as of now, Saturday is on a schedule, but if obviously we have a fourteen day that might go to the middle of next week. Then that's something that I would work with the other teams. Every game, every sport has to be completed by next Sunday, the twenty first. The winter season is officially done then. So anything we were to make up or try and attempt to get done for the kids to play, I would have up until that day to do that. All the various teams. Are at different points of their season. The JV team would have two games left at this point, maybe three. The varsity team would have upwards of five because they've had some other incidents, not them, but teams that have had to cancel with our recent weather and everything. We've had to postpone some games. So. That's where we are. As far as when it comes to a cancellation, I can go right up until basically the day of. If I know early enough, if I know a definite. If this weekend is going to have to be canceled, no matter what, I'll get ahold of the other athletic director to let him know, let the officials know and everything, but. I mean, I don't, I don't make those decisions until I know a hundred percent that we're off.
Okay. And then just real quickly, and this is more of an explanation, either superintendent or perhaps Jeff Parko, thank you for being here. It's great to have. Your expertise here tonight. Can you just explain to me again? The the testing and the returning, it used to be fourteen days quarantine, then I went to ten. Now it's so many days after a negative, but at the same time you have to get tested twice, I think. And can someone just explain that? To me, because some of the parents, to me, were under the impression that some students may be able to return back to school on Friday. That a part of this quarantine, which would make them eligible to play for the game on Saturday. So I just want to have a good understanding of what the actual regulation is, because it seems like every time we talk about it, it changes in some capacity.
Yes. So strangely enough, you actually did a pretty good recap of how it works.
I don't get it.
So the the way it works, so for example, if the exposure date is on February fourth. Then the test out option would be the day seven test out. So they must get a test. On or after day five to be eligible to test out on day seven. That would be day seven at midnight that they may return. So for example, in exposure on two, four, if they test on day five, which is the ninth. They would be, if they're asymptomatic and haven't had symptoms throughout that duration, they would be cleared to return as early as. Two twelve, because they would be cleared on day seven at midnight. That's with the negative test. The traditional. Quarantine right now is still fourteen days, but they're saying you may return, resume normal activity while continuing to monitor for symptoms. On day ten. So that means the individuals that test out could return as early as the ninth. I'm sorry, the twelfth. And if they do not test at all, the person that was exposed on the fourth may return. After two fourteen at midnight. So really with the test out option, you are getting yourself of just a few days. So the timeline. And falling on the weekend and the the consideration that there wouldn't be any school based activities missed. Without testing, I think that may be some of the influence for why one hundred percent of the people didn't test, but it is within their rights to do so. So the options currently are the four quarantine ending. Earliest one is the day five test to test out on day seven. The next option is the ten day, which would make people fall. Right around the fourteenth without testing, they may resume normal activities while continuing to monitor for the four additional days of quarantine. They aren't cleared from quarantine, but they are clear to resume normal activity. Because generally the viral load would be at a level where it would be noticeable and presenting by day ten. So that's the science behind it. And of course, if someone is in a situation where they feel most comfortable waiting for the full duration of fourteen days. The CDC, our local board of health and myself, wholeheartedly have, would encourage people to stay for fourteen days if that's best for them.
I think I got it. Thank you so much.
Yeah, we, it really takes looking at a calendar and going through the days with people to really understand. And the one. Thing that people may not know is that day, the date of exposure or the test date is day zero, not day one. So that can put things out a little bit. Laura?
Thank you. So I have a few questions, but I'll start with you, Jeff, because your explanation just brought up another question. Which is, and I do know a little bit about this timing system, but given the the idea that not everyone has to test. And that after day ten with no symptoms. And that after day ten with no symptoms, um, they can resume normal activity. In this case, they could play again hypothetically, right?
Technically speaking, they would be clear to resume normal activity, but with this current situation, it needs to be run by the epidemiologist, the Department of Public Health. Collaboration with myself and the superintendent and the athletics director to really get the full picture. We need to know that our pause is going to be effective in mitigating this cluster.
Okay, so it's not like honor system, everybody, you know, because honestly, saying you don't have symptoms is um. Is uh, subjective. Uh, people don't, I mean, symptoms are why vary widely. So I'm just wondering who's determining who has symptoms. But it sounds like you guys are on top of this system, this situation, because it's a cluster.
Yes, the symptom list does not change. It's the same symptoms that we have in the screening tool. If anything falls in, some are in conjunction with others, like sore throat in conjunction with other symptoms. If they meet the criteria, there are no questions. It's black and white. You either have a symptom or do not. And you are correct, it is based off the honor system essentially for people to report that.
So that, okay, so people can choose that. Okay. Um, thank you, Jeff, so much for all of this. Um, I though also have some questions for um, superintendent and for Brian Lefata. And I want to say first, just seeing the pictures of the hockey and the basketball reminded me how amazing it is that the kids are getting to play. Play sports like this year has been so crazy that it's just a godsend to me to that they've been able to play. So all the sports. Um, my question is, there's two questions, because hockey was so specific, and I remember that initially. Um, and that's what created this total group quarantine situation that we're in now, or with a piece of that. What, you know, it it feels like it's it's quite risky to even go back. I understand there's more games to be played. But it feels like quite a risk, given that there's now, you know, thirty six kids out from hockey um, to try to restart it. I'm wondering, and and I say that knowing how important these games are to everyone. That's one piece of my question. The other piece is obviously someone went between JV and varsity. And I'm wondering what we can learn from that um, moving forward, uh, if there's a way to not have that happen in spring sports. Um, I'm sure you're already thinking about this. I know, you know, this is sort of obvious, but um. Clearly, it's a, it's a, it's a place where like a vulnerability happened. Um, so I just wanted to hear about those, those two pieces of it. You know what?
Well, as far as part two, I can um, I mean, a little bit on that with the uh, the co-mingling of somebody. Between the various, I'll I'll be honest, that's the first time we've done it this fall and winter. But it's without me divulging too much information about who the person may be, there was um, more done out of a necessity. Other than that, it, our coaches have had to been in difficult situations because so many levels are used to saying, oh, you know what, this kid's not playing much on varsity. I'm going to drop him down to JD for a couple of games and vice versa. Um, this year I've just been pretty much hard set that no, that's not happening. Um, this one situation, as I mentioned in the initial kind of presentation, was a uh, the fact that the luck of the draw that this individual was the one. Um, but like I said, it was more of a necessity, but even now, I, in the future, the the I there won't be a necessity. I mean, it's just, it is what it is. Um, and and that's it.
Thank you.
Um, Laura, I just don't remember the first question.
The first part was basically. Given how many kids go out with one uh, with one case in hockey, is it worth, frankly, starting the season up for another four days?
Yeah. So I I think, I think, I mean, I want to be clear to folks, this is not a clear cut. You know, decision for a lot of reasons. One, it's still developing, okay? You know, families in order to be safe need to get tested and then need to make sure we know about that, right? Uh, and also hockey is different. So where is if you had. You know, one case ten days ago, coming back tomorrow, you know, for one student, it isn't that big a deal. They come back, it's low, being in school is a lower risk risk activity. But we need to remember that hockey is a higher risk activity. It has certain protocols, like everyone is quarantined. And everyone's considered a close contact if they're on the ice and suited up um, for a reason. There's higher been higher of higher number of cases in hockey and and higher more transmission in hockey. Okay, so um, that actually sets it apart. So we can look at the individual number of days. But that doesn't mean that hockey begins that next day, just because there are enough enough kids able to suit up. Okay, and one piece of that is it's Department of Health has got it, has got to determine that the cluster is resolved. Okay, so I I don't want to raise people's hopes that because you'll have enough players out of quarantine on Friday, they're all playing on Saturday. We're not there yet. Okay, we may not get there. Okay, it may not be till next Wednesday that the that Department of Health determines that the cluster is resolved. Okay, um, you know, and so uh, and so just those are, I just want to. Remind folks that we're not just talking about any quarantines here. We're talking about quarantines of a program where there have been three different cases in in a short amount of time. Okay, um, and then the other piece then is, you know. And this is something that that James and I uh, and Brian and Jeff were all talking about today and yesterday is, you know. Um, these folks have already missed a substantial amount of class time. Do we uh, risk that again? You know, and that's that weighs on us, you know, that really weighs on us. Um, and then, you know, I I, none of that's easy, none of that's, but it's got to be considered. It really has to be considered.
Thank you.
Yeah. Amanda, then Joel?
Thank you. First, I just want to thank you, Brian, because it it's obvious that your commitment to the safety of the whole program and the school community. Is first and foremost. Um, this has been uh, a lot of work for you and for the coaches. So I appreciate it and for the students. Um, so first, I have two questions. Was there any other communities and teams impacted by this? Did the? Did Gloucester play any other teams?
Uh, as far as hockey goes, no, because of the situation of um. The, some of the test results when they've come in right now, within the window, uh, we haven't seen any teams in several days now. From the initial one, uh, it was deemed uh, the individual was not anywhere. It it was easy enough to determine a close contact or not, and they were nowhere near the other team whatsoever or officials. Uh, our girls' basketball case, uh, as I said, they got it being at another team's facility. Uh, and that one there, that team did also affect another team the day before that they had played. So um, that one case from uh, an opposing school did affect three different basketball teams.
Yeah, so a little bit of a domino effect there.
Does happen a lot, uh, the domino effect, because as I said, we've had upwards of probably in the entire conference, close to thirty different teams have um, momentary pauses. And every time we hear about one or we're communicating, it's usually like, okay, who did you play in the past twenty four or forty eight hours? And you see the domino effect a little bit come up.
Sure, thanks. And then James, if you wouldn't mind just um, helping us understand uh. Just how this impacts students' learning and how it's impacting the teachers' workload, caseload. Um, I just think it's important for us to get that perspective as well.
Absolutely. No, thank you. That's exactly why I'm here. Um, you know, though, we've been collaborating on all the pieces. That's um, the primary role that I'm playing here. So. Um, each of these um, uh, student athletes will um, who are in the hybrid will miss uh, in-person class time. We send um, communication to the families, the students, counselors and all the teachers saying. Stating this, so that was a lot of communication this weekend. It's all individualized for that individual situation, so the teachers can work with the students directly. So we did all that communication over the weekend. And then the then the teachers, um, as you know, there are different. What remote learning looks like in the hybrid is different in different classes. Some are having simultaneous Google meets. With, you know, the in-person students as well as the students at home and other discipline. In order to be most effective, um, the students who are remote are doing some work while the students in person are, you know, getting the full attention of the teacher. So in each class, you you're, I heard you ask about the, you know, what the teacher is doing, right? With the, you know, with, and so the teachers are um, make needing to make, uh, you know, did in many cases have to make adjustments this week. Uh, for these students uh, to and um, you know, make sure they understood uh, some assignments that they would not be in person to get the full instruction for. And so that um, correspondence, you know, is a lot of, a lot of the response to the correspondence from the administration was then correspondence from teachers about what exactly will the. Remote instruction look like for these students over the course of the week. So um, you know, all hands on deck, you know, we're all ready to kind of help the students and and provide them with direction about. How they can still engage in learning while remote, but it does, you know, does have an impact. Um, on 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 people's bandwidth and and what we can do. And teachers did a great job, I I think, of really responding to this. But that's some of the effects. So, you know, teachers doing this communication, um, and the students uh, having to do remotely. Things they would otherwise have been able to do in person.
James, just one quick follow-up. Who's doing the communication on the weekends? Is that you, the administrator?
Yes, that was uh, my dean, the deans and and myself, we uh. We'll get to the details about how we did it to communicate, but uh, you know, creating spreadsheets. Sometimes I wake up in the middle of the night dreaming of spreadsheets from all of this. Uh, so, and then, you know, and then dividing up the work uh, of doing that communication for folks. So, um, and of course.
The school community is pretty broad.
It is broad, yes, right. And as you know, you've heard, been hearing about all summer and through the fall, the high school is so complex. Then in order to do this kind of communication, right, we, you know, takes a whole, it really took a plan and then executing a plan for the students.
Thank you. Well, thank you for spending all that extra time.
Well, you know, everybody, the kids are are putting the work on the ice and, you know, on the basketball court and so on. So we're in in the classroom, so we're going to do everything we can to support them.
Thank you.
Joel?
Thank you. Um, seeing as it seems to be a multiple question, I have two as well. My first one is to Brian. So Brian, I have sat in the field house um, at the preseason meeting with you for several seasons. And every season when you're speaking to the athletes and speaking to their families. You articulate in no uncertain terms that they are student athletes, student comes first, athlete comes second. You really hammer home that people's academic careers, as far as you are concerned, are more important than their athletic careers. And the fact that this team has missed a week of school through this one exposure, and I hope that everything resolves, you know, as as best as possible, if this cluster can, you know, subside. How does or does sending them back in to face the same risk that they may miss, you know, if God forbid. They get cleared, they play a game, and turns out the team we played had a positive case, and they're all knocked back out of school for a week or two weeks. You know, does that jive with your philosophy that these students, you know, academic careers come first and their athletic careers come second?
Yep, I know exactly what you're saying. We've talked about this before. I I do bring that up every single time we have a family or parent meeting. I am not in the position to thankfully to make decisions on health. Um, decisions, obviously, this is over my head. So if the DPH, CDC, EEA comes and says that we, I've been saying this since day one of the pandemic. If they say I, we can play a sport safely if you do this, 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 I'm going to do that. I'm an athletic director, so I've got to advocate for sports. If there was just a, it's a clear cut, if if this meeting, if we came into this tonight and they said one hundred percent you are done for the next fourteen days, which would take us past next, the twenty first. I would say, yes, I I I'll listen to the the experts in the field.
But but I want to push back on that because the experts in the field have already told you what the rules are. And if they come back and say, yes, you can play. You, as the athletic director, know that you're sending dozen or dozens of your students back into the exact same risk they faced. That just hit them this past week. And so the protocols aren't changing, the risk remains the same. And so the risk is. That they would say, yeah, you're clear, the cluster is resolved. And if you choose to go back and play a game, you can play a game. But they could very next game get knocked right back out if the if the roll of the dice is unlucky. And DPH and Jeff Parko and Karen Carroll can't tell you what the roll of the dice is going to be. They're just going to tell you that, yes, this cluster is resolved and you are clear to move forward. But you, the athletic director, have to send your students into that situation again, or not send them into that situation again. And so I'm curious how how that decision weighs on you, given that, you know, you are, I believe, genuinely concerned about their academic success.
So let me let me just step in here, because um, yeah, I I think that's a concern we all have to have here, not just Brian, and Brian does share that concern. Um, but people, we all need to sort of.
With all due respect. Only you have the athletic director on this. He he's the one that, you know, has to make this advocate, and he's the one that advocates, you know, for these students. And he's the one that has to, you know, um, discuss this this balance. So I appreciate your, you know, you may have some opinions and that we want to hear also. I'd like to hear. How Brian himself weighs this risk, given, you know, the the balance of athleticism and academics.
Uh, I I, just a moment, okay? And then, so what I want to say, and what I will say is that. That's.
Again, I'm sorry, point of order, Mr. Chair. I've asked a question for a staff member who's here. I've not asked a question of the superintendent. I would appreciate if the superintendent would let the staff member answer the question.
You know, Joel, um, what you're asking is is how Brian thinks about things that are essentially um. Not um, wi- within his, he is, he is, he has got to do what his job is. And um, I I, you know, it's it's like asking um, somebody what they were thinking when they, you know, did something. It it's, you know, I think it's a little, a little off and um. Brian, if you if you feel comfortable answering this question, go right ahead. But if um. I, if you say um, I'm, you know, it's.
I'm fine answering. I I have advocated for for academics. They are student athletes. Uh, as I said, there's certain points where they say, in your job, you can go out and let the the kids play. There is a risk. Then with that is the next step. Then that's me communicating with the families and letting them know there's a clear risk to this. I sent out an email at the beginning of the season saying, especially some of these sports, there is a risk. That we could take the court and it could be completely out of our team's control that we get it, and there are potential full team shutdowns. So that would be my next step in my job, would I would send out that communication and make it clear. That point, then we start to hear. Some families, they might say, you know what, it's not worth the risk right now. I've got to give that opportunity to these families and these kids. Everyone has different feelings about that. So if they feel strongly, we've had families and even coaches this year opt out. And I completely respect that. I'm not going to beg anyone to come and play. Then at that point, it's my job to evaluate. Okay, if we have this many not feeling safe. We don't have enough to put them safely on the ice or on the court, then right there, I'm going to have to say, sorry, I've only got twelve hockey players. I can't play a game safely with these kids. Now we're going to have to pull the plug on this. But at this point now, I feel if it's the, the experts tell me that you can go out there, you can take the chance, then I put that um, on the individual families. I give them the choice. This is their kids, some of these kids, it's their last four or five games they might ever play in the sport. I'm going to give them the choice to to make that decision. Um, and they they will know the risk and I will work with them and I'll keep doing what I do with my staff to make sure we're as safe as possible.
Thank you. I I appreciate that answer. And if I, I think this asks my second question, which is uh, to Principal Cook. Um, so again, you have a different set of responsibilities and, you know, a different calculus that you have to do. Given the disruption to the academics for these, you know, three dozen students. Given the extra work that you and the deans had to put in as far as you're talking, you're giving the alone, given the extra work your teaching staff has had to deal with. Um, hey buddy, I'll talk to you in a second. Do you, as principal, knowing, you know, with the result of having an unfortunate roll of the dice once. Do you, you know, what is your preference? Would you prefer that this dice not be rolled again, or that you, that these students be given the opportunity to roll this dice? And risk that we have a repeat of what's happened this week?
So Joel, I want kids in school, right? Above all, right? We've we've uh, in-person learning for a lot of these kids. They want to be in school. I want them to be in school and uh, to get the education as we've designed it. Um, we don't yet know everything that we will know about this um, cluster, as they're calling it at the state level. So until we know everything we can know about this cluster, any further determination um, is premature. Right? So I don't know yet. I would want to hear everything and all the diagnosis of this. Um, the state epidemiologists uh, about what this cluster means. And what are the risks and so on that are perhaps, uh, you know, still um, still existing in this situation. Um, all of the endeavors of coming to school and all of the endeavors in athletics do entail some risk. We've had, you know, close contacts in school. We've had close contacts um, through athletics. Uh, families have had many close contacts outside of school. Right? So I want kids in school and we'll evaluate uh, you know, what we, the information that we get ultimately from the. Um, from the state about this cluster to then make a decision.
But I guess what I'm saying is that, let's say this goes as well as possible, you know, it was a, again, unlucky event, but of these three cases that are isolated, everyone's back as as quick as possible. On the quickest timeline possible, these students get back, you know, is even what you. You know, is even what you've gone through now worth going through again? And I'm sorry if people think I have an opinion. I don't actually have, you know, an opinion on this, but I'm curious. What the opinion of the people involved are. Would you go through, even if you don't do anything else beyond what you've already gone through, from here out, it's pretty smooth, everything resolves? Best case scenario, you know, is it worth it for you to go through this again to provide this opportunity to these athletes?
So if the risks.
I think I think Principal Cook answered the question by saying he doesn't have all the information yet, and neither do we. So I think he's actually answered your question.
Again, I appreciate that, but he's he's, he knows what he's done so far. I'm just saying, if you repeat what you've done so far. It's just just this week and whatever else you've done to this point up until tonight and nothing else from tonight. Would you go through it again?
Two things, Joel. So first part is making an adjustment, as Brian talked about, in preventing any. Even in a case where we have a need for there to be someone involved in two teams, we don't have that. So if the risk is determined to be the same risk that we have for all the athletics. And that we have frankly in in a school, right, in places where we're at less than six feet. Then that would be an opportunity that would be very much in keeping with the decisions we've made throughout the year from the beginning. So we'd make that consistent. You know, I would expect that we would continue to make that kind of consistent decision. Right? Yeah. If there is additional risk, if if this, certainly if this cluster is unresolved, you know, then no, we, you know. It will follow the guidance to not take the risk.
Thank you. I I really appreciate the answers from both of you. Again, I understand that these questions I'm asking, you know, are hard or direct. I think it's important that. Regardless of the decision being made, the public is fully aware that this is, you know. Not just you saying you're not taking it lightly, but they hear that this is really well thought out and you've really considered a multitude of factors in guiding what you do going forward. So I really appreciate you taking the time tonight to answer these questions.
Samantha?
Can I, uh, like to just sort of frame that question just asked to get their clarification? So I, my assumption and and I could be wrong, that this decision wouldn't just fall to to Brian. So my assumption is that the epidemiologists say it's safe to to move forward. That it would be a conversation between Ben, Brian, James, and whoever needs to be a part of that conversation. Am I right? Or or would it be just more like you can play and Brian would go forth and make that decision?
So.
I guess that's a question for Ben.
Sure. Yeah. So so Department of Health has got to be involved. And that's the local Department of Health, okay? Being advised by, say, epidemiologist. And so far, what they've said is that this can't be resolved before the 13th, okay? That's the earliest date that it could be resolved. So and he's, and I would, Brian, I haven't talked about this yet, but you know, it's it's it's. I think it's a game scheduled for the 13th. That's that those likely want to happen because because the reason that is. Because as as we said, this is developing situation, they won't have all the information they need prior to that, okay? And then after that, that to answer your question, Samantha, yes, there'll be a consultation with, you know, us. With Department of Health. And when I say us, I mean Brian, James, myself, Jeff, and the Department of Health. And that's based on information we'll be getting over the next two, three days, you know, that's that's why we say this isn't resolved yet because we need more information. Or we need, need whatever information we're going to get over the next few days. That makes sense.
And I think, I think the question, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joel, is I'm hoping that conversation will include. The risk benefit analysis, given how much time we have left in the season, right? That it's not just going to be based on like, you know, we know the risks. And we've gotten the go ahead, so we're going to go ahead, but that it's also going to include the the risk of additional time out of the classroom, right? So.
Absolutely. And we've already, just so you know, we've already been discussing this at length and and, you know. You know, what's so hard about this is if anyone could guarantee me that these students have already missed a bunch of school, won't be. You know, su- subject to COVID again in the next, in the last two or three games. They can, anyone can guarantee me that, then it then it's simple. But of course, none, none of us can do that. And so it makes it particularly tricky because we do have to balance the the possibility of of, you know, further illness or further COVID with. A very, you know, with the consequence, which is more school missed, you know, and that's what makes this incredibly difficult, honestly. And we still do need more information because because quite frankly, if, you know, one, two, three more positives come out of this. You know, the next few days, forget what I think, the Department of Health will say, forget about it, you know, and I I would say that too myself, but but they would make that call very, very clearly. So, you know, we do have to get more information. Um, yeah, this is still developing and. But that's what makes it so hard for us is we know the. We we know what the risk is of loo- of losing school, but we can't guarantee whether it's triggered or not, you know, so I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I think I think it's just important for us as a committee being focused on education to know that. You know, the decision is going to, is going to include the people who. Are focused on education, right? Not just necessarily athletics.
And listen, I want, I want to, Brian, you know, really, and I think, Joel, you'll read this, you know, Brian really values both of those. And 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 because he does, that's why he's want to be so safe in during our athletic season. So, you know, Brian's in that mix too, absolutely. And he's a tremendous help with it.
I I just want to add that the impact athletics have on students attendance over all in the building as well. Which is a very positive outcome.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. I think, thank you, Jeff. I was going to sort of add to that, right? They, athletes often have. The very best attendance, right, of folks because they got to be there and they got to be there on time, uh, you know. And they've, they've got to be there for the day and so on. So that's a big plus for us. But I, and I will say, we are then also weighing. Risks can be, uh, you know, so it's complicated. There's that. And then there is the other side that, you know, missing a certain amount. Can compound because if you are then out again, you're not that, not only you're missing the second period, but you're also not making up. Whatever might have been lost in the first period. We are doing everything we can and teachers are working incredibly hard to mitigate that through remote learning. Which is something, you know, we keep hearing about, we keep getting better at the remote learning part. So we are working very hard to mitigate. The effects of the timeout and constantly making adjustments, particularly with the quarantining folks in mind. You know, starting back in, you know, really December when we had a, a, you know, other people having to quarantine mostly for stuff happening outside of school. But that's some of those things that we've improved now and the teachers are working really hard on and now applying in this situation as well.
Listen.
Yeah. So James, you you kind of just answered my question. So I'm a little confused about. The missing school part. Um, and I want, I'm trying to take the fear and the drama out of COVID. Because I know it's a very emotional topic. Um, I like, I'm a factual person. I'm driven by facts and I like to make my decisions based on that. So I'm trying to understand because it's my understanding that the kids in the high school do half day remote. In school and then they're in school half a day and then out half a day. We're hearing from teachers that remote is better than it's ever been before because they've been trained on it. So I'm just trying to understand how much is actually lost with them being out of school for a week or so. And and I'm not minimizing that by any, by any way. I'm just trying to understand, is it really that serious? Um, I mean, throughout Massachusetts, its kids are not even in school yet. Um, so what is the big educational loss? Um, of having a week or two doing remote at a high school level where they're already doing half a day remote. So I'm just trying to understand that too. I don't want to over emphasize it or under emphasize it. I'm just trying to understand, is it really that serious or is it manageable? I am one that thinks sports are very important. I particularly take the view that it's a parent's right to choose if their child plays sports. It's not necessarily us telling them they can't. Um, I believe public education provides opportunities. And the parents make the choices for this, children, not us. Um, so I'm just trying to understand this conversation as a whole and where it's going. Where it can go, knowing there's a lot of parents watching that are concerned this program's going to stop. I understand if it stops because of health reasons, if the Board of Health says yes, absolutely. But I'm just wondering what those outside conversations can do if the Board of Health isn't saying no. Or if no other agency isn't shutting us down. I'm concerned to hear how that conversation is going to play out.
Yeah. So I can, I can say a little bit more about what remote learning looks like for students who are quarantining. So first of all, it's going to look. Different in each class because we, as you know, that not all, so. Some teachers, many of our teachers teach simultaneously to the remote students. And the in-person students and their their subject matter really, uh, in many ways might promote that. So our, for example, our entire math department and many of our AP teachers, uh, content heavy courses. Where there's content, um, being, you know, delivered to students and they're processing that, um, you know, content in some way, uh, both in person at home. So so in that kind of environment, they're just going to have more of the remote time. And time that they might be able to get more help from the teacher in person. Is is lessened, right? They're going to, they're not going to have the in-person time. Or there might be an assessment that is designed to be in person that they can't take, right? So the teacher can supervise the assessment. And the, you know, so the teacher designs it so you only take the test when you're in person. You don't take it when you're at home, for example. In other classes, the class is designed so the students are at home, working on something during the remote time to prepare for the in-person time. And there is no synchronous, you know, Zoom like we're doing now or a meet. You're in person or you're at home working to prepare to be in person the next time. And so in those sorts of classes, the teacher may need, uh, to do some more communication, more explanation. To allow, uh, out, you know, through email communication and other ways to make sure that student is able to do the work. Asynchronously, right? Because they're not in person that week and they're not on a, a remote call, a Zoom call, except for on Friday. Everybody's on calls on on Friday. So again, teacher will work to mitigate the, what the loss is, right? It's a lot better than in the old days, just you're not in school, you got nothing, right? It's a lot better than that, either of these two ways. But I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, each of the students experiencing a quarantine is going to experience it different, differently. And the, um, if they miss a test, for example, that's an in-person test, you know, they're going to have to wait to be in person to make that up. That might be a bigger burden. Than somebody who has, um, you know, a lot more synchronous meet calls to be on when they would have been in person. That'll be less of an effect on them. So I think it's, I guess the word is mitigate, we mitigate the heart, you know, the the loss. Of of the students being quarantined, um, in as active a way as possible. And and that's specific to each individual course. Obviously, you know, vocational shop's going to look a lot different for a kid who's remote for that period of time. And and there are some of these students are in in shops. Um, so that's going to look different. They're going to have to wait to do some things until they're back. But all of it is about working to lessen the loss for all of our quarantining students from the very beginning. When we got in person in October, that's been our, that's been our approach.
Thank you. And finally, do you feel that that the teachers that are involved with these students are overwhelmed right now with the situation? Are you getting any feedback? Or are they, um, they're just doing their best, knowing it's extra work and we're all doing extra work these days?
That the 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 second thing you said, Melissa, is exactly how we feel about so many situations. Every day and and some teachers have more of these kids than other teachers. They have more of this lifting to do. You know, but they're collaborating in in important ways. They are, you know, reaching out. Um, but the spirit is we're. We're going to do what we can to help these students. And we're also going to be flexible about what happens when, when they, you know, when they return. But we do want to, you know, since we do have an audience here, we do want to maximize what students are doing when they're remote. And that's true of the remote day, that's true of quarantining, it's true in all situations. And that's a big struggle, right? You know, to be as disciplined and as focused when you're remote for everybody. I was on a couple of calls today with other people from Massachusetts. I was on a call with, uh, you, you've. We've been talking about attendance works here and the work we're doing with attendance work. So that was a nationwide Zoom call I was on today doing some PD with. Attendance Works and these, everything we're talking about here about mitigating the effects of quarantining and if, or whatever, everybody. Is working, working towards. So in this situation, we're applying the same ideas of mitigating the. Effects of remote learning to make it as good as we can.
Thank you, James.
Any other questions? Okay, Ben, you want to move on?
Eric James, if you can add one more thing, which you explained to me and then sort of put, can you talk about just, you know, missing two weeks, how much of the term that is? It just might be, I think it's helpful information.
Sure. So generally, a term is nine, nine, you know, nine to 10 weeks. Forty-five days or so. So if you're, you know, if you do miss two weeks of in-person. In instruction that that, you know, it's significant, right? It's about 20% or so of of the. Of the, of the term of each of any individual marking period. So that is a significant loss that we want to, you know. Again, we're working to make up for it, but as we know, we just in-person learning for so many of our students is is what is best.
So I. Those are half days, right? Half in person.
Yeah, but for that class, you know, for the individual class, you you know, for for, you know, you're in here for A through D block. You're, you're, when you're missing a, a, the teachers are designing things in clusters of the, um, like two-day clusters, right? The remote part and the at-home part. So if you're missing, um, both of those clusters that can. I was just talking to a teacher about this, that that, that it, um, you know, it's, it's, um. Because of the way they're designing lessons, then there can, that that loss can be. Like I say, a buildup to a test and then a test that then if you're out a second week, that's okay. If you're out one week, we, you know, you stay af-. Stay after, you can make that up. But as Ben was saying, it's it's then on top of that, the second week. Can have mu- you know, compound, the difficulty of of coming back from a second week is. Is not just such as twice of the same, it compounds over time is is what I was trying to explain and that some teachers had explained to me. So I know it's, 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 you know, it's, it's, it's really challenging, but I think, Ed, as you had asked before, kind of wanting to. This is the thinking that goes into to the decision. We're, we're trying to. Minimize the amount of of quarantining that needs to happen, the amount of loss. And then if it has to happen, we wanted to make it as good as it can possibly be.
Thank you very much, James. Uh, thank you, folks, also for your good questions and for helping us just sort of elaborate. But also just really get, you know, get into the details about the many different pieces that are at work here.
Can I, um, I had my hand up.
Sorry.
Okay, so, um. First of all, um, thank you, everyone. And James, is there any way that we can take turns and I want to come visit the school? I want to see what the teachers are doing. Um, I swear I wear five masks if you want and a screen. Um, I really want to see, it's so confusing when you're saying, you know. Hybrid, remote, um, I I like to see an actual day, you know, of what I really would, because when we're talking about it, it is kind of confusing for all of us. And if you don't have a child in school, then you don't know what they're going through, or the parents are going through, or the teachers, to, you know, we, we, we want the education. You need the sports, mental health and everything else. So far, these students were out for three days, correct? And next week is school vacation. Are they going to be playing, if they can, let's say whoever you have in the right amount are going to be playing next week, Brian?
I mean, if we're clear, it could be the end, end of next week or you get middle of next week, they could be playing.
Okay, so that they're already home for a week, which is kind of scary anyways, because we all just talked about the numbers going up for vacation and and so forth. And then they come back, they play the sports and so how many more games or or we'll be talking about? Again, I know you said it all depends, five or two, but what are we talking about?
Yeah, what day they would let us return. I mean, as of right now, the earliest return date would be Friday, like we said, but now that they've considered it a cluster and pushed it back. I mean, if we were to return Friday, I would have them practice Friday, they have a game Saturday, they would have five games by next Sunday. That would be varsity team. But then if we don't start till Monday or Wednesday, obviously, it's just going to be shortened at that point.
Okay, in all fairness, can I ask something? Now, unless I I I'm wrong, but this all started because of a coach, correct? All right. So and and enough on this, I'm not pointing what could or should have clusters because I'm familiar with clusters, okay? Um, and I believe me, we've had clusters. Now, this was not the kids. Actually, the kids were doing what they're supposed to be doing. The parents were doing this post and everyone was there. It happened to be one of the assistant coaches and then forty kids are out because of the close contact, because where kids are around, whether they social distance, you're still in the area. And understandable. So that's why, you know, people who may have never have heard of clusters, um, they really need to understand what a cluster is and what we consider. Because cluster too. Um, and it wasn't like all these kids weren't doing what they were doing. So. And and we have to look at that too. We have to look at a lot of scenarios here. We have. and and we have to look at that, too. We have to look at a lot of scenarios here. We have to look at what's left. School vacation's coming up, too. What, you know, there, you know, some of them are gonna be home, some of them are gonna be done and they're gonna be out there again. Some of them are not gonna have any symptoms at all, might have the sniffles and not even know it. I mean, right now, we're in like the second phase of a different COVID. And it's kind of difficult to explain, because you're right, some people don't even have any symptoms at all. And I'm sure the coach probably had no symptoms and then he found out he was positive and that these kids. So and it's hard on the teachers, too, because I was talking to some of the teachers and doing my own little polls here. And it's like fifty-fifty, like the same thing when we first started. And they they want the best for the kids, too. And you know what? And, you know, some say, you know, it's teach or repeat when you're home and the kids and, you know, to get them excited to actually do, you know, homeschooling or whatever. But the fact is, these kids have been going since, how long do they start the hockey? How long they've been doing sports? We've been doing sports since we all complained to how they're gonna get there, if I remember, and should we do it? It it's it's and then to put the burden all on Brian or even James is wrong, because the fact is sometimes they have no say at all. You know, Ben has to represent, you know, like I myself, you know, your city, and he has to represent all the schools, the teachers and everyone else. It's not just one person. And we've had, you know, little incidents and you're very lucky, truthfully, that you guys have Jeff Paco, too, and the nurses you have, because they're incredible. They really are. They're catching it. One, two, three, one, two, three. O'Malley has zero, because you've got great teachers are right on top of that. I have to have my faith in the system. I have to have faith in James, knowing that, you know what, he said it. The teachers, by doing, you know, this is doing extra and he acknowledges it. And the teachers, some teachers who have to do is saying, you know what? I don't mind, because, you know, the students, some of them, it's their last year or they need, you know, they need that. Some of it, it's a mental health for them to be in hockey, to be with the brother or sisterhood. So I'm, you know what, I do trust, you know, the system. I do trust my board of health. I also trust the state's health, you know, saying what you can and cannot do. And I'm sure they're looking at this, because this, we're probably gonna be like, okay, so this is the cluster. That's what happened. And what can we go from there? I, I don't know if we're we're gonna, what we're gonna say for you to do. I think really, we don't have all the answers tonight. And we have to be very careful of, you know, what's gonna happen. And until, actually, because truthfully, you could be next to someone today. And let's say I tested positive and today is the tenth. It goes back forty-eight hours. Okay, from when I tested positive, not when I felt sick. Then what's gonna happen is they're telling you now, don't go out and run and get a test, because it could be a false negative. So you can have your negatives and it could be not, you know, the PCI negative, whatever, doesn't matter, but it still can develop up to four or five days. So when did this all begin?
So the third and the fourth. But so that's why folks have been waiting till day five to get their tests, for the exact reason you're talking about. Really get a false positive. And that then that's, and that guidance has become much, much clearer to folks. And that's what Department of Health directs people to do.
And out of the forty, we have two?
Well, three total. I mean, two, two, two new cases. That's the answer.
Right. And it's already been over the five days and and from there on, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna trust, you know, I'm gonna trust the system. Because I know that the system is not gonna let them play if they feel that more is developing. Okay, they'll tell them right now, you can't. End of subject. No matter what you wanna do, they're gonna say they're gonna have to quarantine, stay home. They can't even go away for vacation if they planned on vacation. So I'm gonna trust the system. But I really wanted to thank Brian and Ben and James on this, because it's very difficult and the teachers who have to do that. But like I said, Jeff, you know, you're my best friend now anyway. So it's just great. And I I can't even tell you, like I said, but it, you know, for the teachers who have to do that extra and are willing to do that extra, thank you, because you know what? It is. It's part of mental health, too. You know, right now, it 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 is, you know, everyone thinks it's great weather. It's coming. We're still gonna get some more snowstorms. We've got to figure that out. But the fact is, it is, it's scary, because we really don't know fourth day, fifth day, tenth, do we come, whatever. But I trust the state. I trust Desi. I trust them all to come and do their job and look at these cases and say, I'm sorry, Brian, you can't. You you can't. That's it. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna hope that it's not that way. I'm gonna hope that it's gonna be up to the parents and the kids. And and like I said, it wasn't the kids' fault. And it's not really the coach's fault, because if you have no symptoms, you don't know. So you know what? And that's what the scary part about it. We can all have a cluster and not even know. You'd not even gonna know. And we're gonna be walking around. You can go out. You can be wherever you want, but you can have, you can be at the market and get that and bring it back to the teachers. That's why we have to emphasize, you know what, enough of the enough of the BS people and get these teachers vaccinated and get these coaches vaccinated, because the fact is, you know what? Whether it's one person or a cluster, it's still putting people at risk. And we have to, we have to stand by our teachers and say, you know what, they said it's fifty-fifty, but we have to stand out and do that letter. And and that's all I'm saying. I I mean, everyone here is asking great questions. Everyone here is concerned and rightfully so, you know, and we want the best for this kids. And you know what? We should all be proud, because I've been and saw other school committees. And you know what? They're not even thinking about this. So, you know, should we all pride yourself and work together? And it's, it is, it it is very difficult. So. And Joel, I think you look great as a dad again. And thanks for bringing some questions and concerns up, everyone, because you know what? This way, we understand a little bit of, I want a tour. I really want, I really wanna be able to, I have no idea what you people are talking about. You know, I wanna see it. I really do. I need to get into the school and I'm gonna make an appointment. And you know how they used to say, follow the teacher? Well, I'm following one. So whoever teacher wants to take me around, I'm gonna do it. Thank you.
It's likely you'll get a number of takers. Jonathan, should we go on?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Brian and Jeff and James. And we will, let's move on to the budget, the next year's budget. We can, the review of this year's budget, we we're gonna have a BNF meeting a week from Monday and anybody who wants an update, we were updated on that budget at our last BNF meeting. And we can, we can bring it up.
Yeah, they're gonna talk about the budget. Can I go back to COVID? It's easier.
So, no, 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 but I do want to wrap one thing up, Jonathan, to be clear with everyone here, is that that we continue to work with Department of Health on hockey here. They they will, we'll not have a decision sooner than Saturday, okay? People say Thursday, Friday. That's for individual cases. It's not for the program. Okay, so, you know, there is a very strong likelihood that the that the Saturday games will be canceled. Okay, we'll let you know that on Saturday, and that depends what's happening in the next forty-eight hours. But just wanna be clear in terms of timing for folks. And then and at that point, you know, Brian's been a great, is a great communicator with the athletic department. James and I, you know, will also, you know, we'll all work together. But but no one should expect any any decision prior to Saturday about Saturday's game. Okay, let me be clear about that. Any questions about that? Okay, great. Just wanna be clear. All right. So let's move on. We'll take a very hard turn to the budget from athletics. And let me share my screen here. One second. It's always the hardest part of the meeting. Okay. Okay, you can see a presentation? Great. So the goals for tonight's presentation are present the primary components that make up the FY22 budget, summarize the major adjustments planned for the for the upcoming year's budget, and then hopefully present budget priorities and new expenditures that clearly reflect the school and and department strengths and priorities, which we presented to you, I guess, in January, in January, yeah. So just quickly to recap the process so far, we've worked with budget managers, meaning principals and department heads over the last few months, a couple of months. We had a couple, a couple of rounds of budget meetings with them, both initially to talk about their strengths and their priorities and the requests they're making. We put those together to understand where they were and how some of those fit together and some of them and and didn't, and also fit together with ongoing priorities, years' work in the past and what we hope to accomplish in the future. We called those, presented them back to their department heads and and principals, and then came to understanding about, you know, the the essential priorities that we could, we could actually make and the changes, investments we could make for the upcoming budget. And then we began presenting those to you last month. We provided a very similar presentation that we're providing to you tonight to the BNF subcommittee, I think, two weeks ago about in January. And so now, and then we're gonna sort of do the next version of this, which is honed a little bit, but essentially has the same broad strokes that we shared at BNF. So at the last, at the BNF meeting, you asked about the budget book and there's some discussion about the budget book and what the committee would be getting that. And so we're gonna be presenting that at the BNF committee first, immediately after school vacation. So that's Monday, Monday, the twenty-second, at next BNF subcommittee meeting. You'll all be getting budget books. Gary, just prior to that, do they get them, or do we share them that day and go through them with folks and then they can start to review them afterward?
We're gonna have that digitally, digital budget books. And there will be a few, a couple of days before the meeting in their budget, in their folders.
Okay, great, great. And that and that gives you a chance to review them a little bit before the before the meeting, but then you have them on the ongoing, you know, upcoming meetings beyond that, so we can continue to review if necessary. And that's what I'm saying, is that's the the first time you'll have the budget book. And then the remainder of the schedule, as you know, we you'll have a vote in March about the draft budget that we presented to public hearing, which is in beginning of April. And then we continue the process submitting to the mayor and then working with city council all to have a hopeful school final vote by the city council and then the school committee by the end of June, which is a typical budget calendar. That's not anything different at this point. So some guiding principles, just to remind you of these, based on it, we we wanna always budget based on our strengths and our priorities. We are making connections, the district improvement plan that's been in place for a couple of years. We are first building a budget for a normal school year. We are hoping for a normal school year next year. And we are building for that based on what we expect our operating budget to be from the city. And we will develop contingencies as we go along, and I'll actually mention some of those, some of that planning later tonight. And then the last piece here is especially in this year where budget picture is, is, you know, murky and has a lot of variables in it. Moderation and financial prudent, prudent are a must. So we're having limited increased request, new request. We're balancing those with some some changes in the way we do things. And we'll continue to share that with you as we go along, especially as we get into the details of the actual budget book. So our priorities, which we've shared with you before, and what we're basing on any of the, you know, some of the primary changes this year on and adjustments are continuing our work on targeted academic support and intervention. So how do we, that that actually matches with the notion of collaborative assessment of student learning. So how do we understand how students are doing? The challenges they're facing, where our instruction is working, where it's not working? And how do we do that in a thoughtful, regular way, it's informed by data, to make decisions about how to regroup or provide interventions or accelerate students as necessary? A key aspect of it is always our strength or core instruction or our strength, sorry, strengthening our core instruction. And that is meaning what is the teaching and instruction every child gets every day? And we do that primarily through professional development, our meeting time, the time that teachers are working together with each other. And then expanding English language learner services and supports, we've described and shown to you how we're sort of have, well, we have seen a significant increase over the past five years in our English learner population, but we are, have not kept up with that in terms of resources and also staff. We'll talk tonight about our recent investments in social, emotional, and mental health and how we'll, we're wanna strengthen those in the years, in the year to come. And then also, also described to you tonight, how we've had significant recent investments in technology, but we've got to make sure that we can maintain those and get the most out of that technology. And we'll explain how we're, how we need to support that, that those investments you've made. And then also wanna also maintain, make sure we're working with the DPW and on our own, maintaining building equipment, infrastructure, furniture and the like. So those are things you'll see, should see as we go forward in terms of what adjustments and additions we're making, recommending. So I'll hand things off to Gary right now and he'll go through the primary budget components. These are the the pieces, the major piece that make up this year's budget and most budgets, most, most budgets every year. Gary?
Okay, thank you, Ben. The primary expense categories, really, there are two primary categories, and that is salary and benefits and ordinary expenses. Salary and benefits, we're a labor-intensive organization, service-based. So we're gonna spend our our budget on salaries and benefits to provide service to students. And that represents eighty-six percent. And ordinary expenses is everything but salary and benefits. Now we'll drill down on the ordinary expenses and take a look at this pie chart. If you look at the green shaded pie slice and the red and orange, those three slices are contracted services. Of the three, two of them, special education and transportation, represent sixty-two point eight percent of the ordinary expenses. It's interesting to note that supplies and equipment represent only nineteen point three percent. So it's now you're looking at nineteen point three percent of fourteen percent. So it's a fairly small segment of our total budget. Let's move on to the next drill down. We'll look at this, what comprises the salaries, a more detailed look at the salaries. Our professional salaries and L, English language learner salaries. Together, they represent eighty-three point two percent. So the biggest slice of the salary budget is our professional salaries. Clerks, paraprofessionals, noon supervisors, they represent ten point two percent. And then other salaries of four point five percent. Those are substitute costs, bus monitors, crossing guards, bus, bus driver salaries. So that gives you a detailed breakdown of the salary cost. And now this is annual changes to the budget. What is interesting is that all but the program expenses and the special education out of district tuition cost, all are related to salary and benefits. So if you look at the cost of living adjustments, that's your inflation, and that is tied to the salaries, step in lane, retirements, our retirements. We have five teachers retiring. The difference between the top end and the beginning salary is about thirty thousand dollars. So there are some savings when teachers do retire. And that will help together with other reductions, there's a reduction in out-of-district tuition because of students graduating. We have six students graduating together. That totals one point one million dollars. But later we'll look at, not all that is savings. We're gonna lose some state aid. And then we'll have to reduce that and look at the net savings. So let's move on to the next category, next slide.
One second. There we go.
That that's the other way.
I know. Hold on. There we go.
All right, let's look at the English language learner enrollment. That has been growing at a nice clip of ten percent each and every year. And that is the reason why we're adding, as Ben will talk about, we're gonna add a couple of staff positions to deal with the increased enrollment and to better service our L population. Here's where the students are going to school. They're going to school, obviously, O'Malley, the middle school and the high school, but also there's large pockets at Beaman and Veterans. Now, this is a little complicated, so if you get a little lost, I'll try to go slow. The circuit breaker funding is state aid for the out-of-district tuition students. And the tuition cost is a partnership between the local and the state funding. The state funding always comes in the year after the costs are incurred. And then that money goes into a separate revolving fund. And then we spend it the next year. So if we look at FY24, that five hundred eighty-eight thousand is that five hundred eighty-eight thousand is, goes back to the, the budget year of FY twenty-two. That's when the students are graduating, there won't be, we won't be incurring cost for those graduates. But the state aid that we're going to spend in FY twenty-four comes from the enrollment in FY twenty-two. And you see, and we talked about a one point one million dollar reduction in our cost. That is then offset by the reduction of about six hundred thousand, as you can see, between FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four. So our net savings from one point one minus the six hundred thousand is five hundred thousand. So that will, we'll use that to add some new positions, some new program cost for new programs and that helps balance the budget. So if we move on, federal and state grant adjustments. It's pretty consistent year after year. We did see a minor uptick in the title one sale, title one revenue. And that had to do with a change in enrollment practice calculation. We increased our enrollment based on what Desi reported. A ninety-eight students going from FY twenty to FY twenty-one. That was because they went back to twenty sixteen and looked, looked at the calculation back in twenty sixteen and compared that to the direct certification method. And whichever was greater, we were able to use for increased enrollment for the title one. Which impacted more state aid or more federal aid for that title program. So I know that was a little confusing, but the end result is there was an increase of forty-eight thousand dollars. So let's move on to the next slide. If you will, here are salaries funded by grants. Again, the title one is one of our largest grants as well as the special education two forty grant. Between those two represent almost a million. Oh yeah, just over a million dollars between just those two grants. So the total is pretty consistent from FY twenty-one to FY twenty-two. And the change from year from twenty-two to twenty-one was only fourteen thousand dollars. So let's move on to the next slide. And here, the salaries funded by the COVID nineteen grants for FY twenty-one, we were very fortunate to receive significant amount of grant funding from the city. Which helped pay for five hundred nineteen thousand dollars of salaries. As well as from the Desi coronavirus relief fund. And then from S R one. Altogether, they represented one point three million towards paying for our remote salaries for our remote academy. FY twenty-two, so far we've allocated ninety-six thousand from the budget. We want to reserve placeholder in case we have to run the remote academy again for FY twenty-two. We don't know at this point. So we're holding our, the funds in reserve in case we have to expend it on the remote academy. So I'm going to turn it back over to Ben and then I'll be able to answer questions when we're both done.
Let me just pause there because we've given you quite a bit of information now. Anything to, to go back, any questions about any, what, what Gary showed you in terms of those primary components of the, of the, whether that's grants, any question about those or about circuit breaker? Any, any questions for the committee at this point?
I can't see if you've got, so.
I, I can see Laura, is that, is that okay?
Just, just a quick question. We probably don't know what other grants could be coming related to COVID. Is that right?
Yeah, the only one we know at this point is S R, S R two, they're calling it, and that's one point nine million. But, but we, we were all told, I think, you know, had. Oh yes, let me just, can you see the, can you see the presentation? Okay, yeah, on this, so if you see it, only one we know about this point is S R two, which is one point nine million, which is a lot more than S R one was, but as you can see, we're still one point one million less than what we had on grants all told. So that's, so that's, well, at this point, it's, it's just something to be aware of.
But there could be others coming.
Yeah, exactly, exactly right, exactly right. So as, as folks, if you, if you're watching the news, you know that President Biden is working hard on that. And wants to have more relief to cities and towns that part of that's schools, we believe, but also municipalities. But of course, none of that's set yet. That, that's, that's in terms of some of our contingency planning. We, we don't, you know, one way we could do this is start spending this one point nine million and, 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 and no and proposing a lot of different things to, to spend it on. We don't want to do that yet because we want to see how things sort out. In terms of what the state requires, what's expected of next, us next year. Especially in terms of remote learning.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Other questions? Okay, I don't see any, so we'll jump into the next piece. So this is where we look at just one of the, the changes that, that we're proposing or I'm proposing for the next year's budget. So just some of the basics here, the current fiscal year twenty-one budget is forty-four point four million dollars. We're suggesting forty-five point six million dollars, recommending that. That's an increase of one point two five million dollars. And that percent increase is two point eight two, significantly that if you, if you take away the health insurance increase, okay. The, the total proposed increase instead of one point two five million is, comes down to seven hundred and twenty-four million, seven hundred twenty-four thousand, sorry. So a big chunk, essentially about five hundred thousand dollars of that increase is just health insurance cost. Gary, I have that right, correct?
Yes, you do.
Okay, great. So in terms of that two point eight two percent increase, that's comparable, you know, to recent increases. It was six year average here is two point five nine. You'll see some years we've been above two point eight two and some years we've been below. Sort of three above and three below. So we, we're trying to again be reasonable here and be prudent in terms of our request. And so it's in alignment with, you know, the la- last six years. Um, I see a, a hand raised from Melissa. Is that okay to take that?
Thank you. Where, where did we get the percentage raised for the health insurance, the eight percent? What, what is that figure based on? What information?
Gary, we had that coming up, don't we?
Yes, we have that coming up. Do you want us to address it now or?
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? I looked at this earlier and I thought you, it was already on a slide. So I apologize. We can wait till we get there. I apologize. I thought it was talked about already.
So we'll get there. Yep. All right, super. So just again, that the, the requested increase is, you know, in, in line with the last six years. Which is, you know, really important, just in terms of being reasonable. These are the significant cost adjustments. And so there's some that are up, some that are, that are down and that balances out to one point two five million. We'll go into some of these in more detail in a moment. Ordinary increases, ordinary expense increases, some new program and new positions will, I'm recommending. Health insurance, we'll describe that a little bit more detail and then also out of just tuition. So we just go into some of that. You will see very importantly prepaid tuition, as everyone, as, as the committee members know. Gloucester has historically tried to prepay some of our out of just tuition in advance. Typically, that, that's averaged about eight hundred thousand dollars a year, some above, some below. This year, at this point, we're anticipating being able to prepay just over half a million dollars, which is quite a bit better, as you know, than we thought we might be in the situation we might be in earlier this year as we were projecting ahead. So. Here's the health insurance. So you'll see eight point six four percent. Gary, I know that if you can describe just that number, looking at that number and how you came about with that number, what information you have already?
Sure. This is really a trend analysis at this point. Over the last three years or last two years, FY twenty-one and FY twenty, it's between seven and eight percent. So we're projecting conservatively, again, low over eight percent. We don't have any information yet from GIC. It's a little early yet. We'll refine these numbers, but based on a historical perspective. You can see over the last five years, everything was above five point nine percent except for one year. And that was FY nineteen. And these are based upon claims data. So what the GIC looks at is the history of people going to the doctor, different procedures, medical procedures, and they look at the actual experience. And then come up with a, a rate. And that rate and is, there's many different plans they GIC offers. And each of the plans have a different increase. The ones that our people are predominantly signed up for tend to be a lower cost, but increases have been seven to eight percent. So at this point, we rather err on the side of conservative, conservative. And then we can always move that back if the data suggests otherwise.
Thank you, Gary. Melissa, does that answer your question?
Yeah, kind of. So I'm a GIC coordinator for the state and I'm just hearing that it could be more than eight percent. So that's why I'm more concerned this year than ever. I mean, usually I'm thinking it's less than we projected, but this year I just have concern. So I was just wondering if you had more information than I did, that's all. But thank you.
Thank you, sure. Okay, moving on. So average tuition. So as Gary was saying, we do have some students graduating, which will lower our, our addition, district costs for tuition. But we also then always every year prepare for incoming students. And students who come in towards the end of this year or the big, or during next year. And depending on, on when they, when they join us, we are responsible for either all or part of their tuition. So we are carrying three hundred and one thousand dollar tuition contingency for next year. Which is, you know, in alignment with past contingencies. Often we don't spend that whole contingency and that's one of the things that helps us prepay for the upcoming year. So, so, so now we are going into the area about new positions. So what's important here for us is a few things. One, they're tied to the priorities that our leadership team and principals and department heads have, have, have come to in terms of the work they're doing and want to, have been doing in their schools and also want to continue. And they're also based on some, you know, in, in some areas based on district wide trends. So the first one to start here is supporting English language learners. Really want to really focus on that in two areas. One is, and that's elementary O'Malley will be adding half a teacher at both, both places. The next one is the K to eight bilingual family outreach coordinator, and this is sort of a two for in a sense. This is by, by adding this position, we are supporting students in schools, K to eight. And supporting connection between families and those students in our schools. We are also specifically on English language learners. But also in our registration process, this person will help us for registering all families K through twelve. Whether they're English speaking or speaking other languages. So that's a, that's one of the, another benefits isn't, isn't someone who's, someone who's servicing all families with registration. And that's going to make our registration clearer, more easy to understand and also faster. And that is benefiting, will benefit both families, but also our principals, school secretaries as, as we're absorbing and welcoming new families into our schools. And then the last area that this person will be helping us with is outreach to community partners. We're doing more and more work with community partners around supporting families, particularly supporting English learner families. And so having someone in this position who can, you know, work very closely with Christine Castle and with other, and our partners, partner agencies and, and the city will benefit all families, particularly English language learner families. That's one, that's one way we're addressing the prior area. In terms of targeted academic support and strengthening core instruction, we're going to, we're trying to do that in a couple of areas. At the BNF committee meeting, James described, and also during the, yeah, during those committee meetings. James, Principal Cook talked about really the need to accelerate students at the high school who are struggling with literacy. For a variety of reasons. And so this English teacher would be doing that. They'd be providing interventions, targeting interventions. Really, if we think the way we talk about it is, is the second dose, the double dose of literacy and English language for those folks who are, are struggling with literacy. And those practices that that new teacher would be doing are also transferable into our other English classes. So, you know, during the core academic class. Other teachers can support kids who are, you know, still, still struggling perhaps with reading comprehension or coming up to grade level. On reading comprehension at the high school level. The next area we did, I think, I think you saw the coaches were here with Greg Bach earlier in the year describing the many roles that our coaches play. And that's why you see when we're talking about either adding coaches or interventionists, you see that they actually hit a number of the priority areas here. They're instrumental in the work that our teachers do altogether on assessment of learning, assessment of student learning. They're instrumental in organizing those meetings and helping teachers on the collaboration. Doing that data analysis to prepare for those meetings. They're really instrumental in identifying which supports, additional support students need. And how to organize those, sometimes through tutoring, sometimes through small groups, sometimes by them doing some interventions themselves. And then they also play a, a strong role in the strengthening core instruction across the entire school as well. So they're really instrumental piece in working directly with our teachers and supporting them to improve our professional practice. We have been, we've had been fully staffed with literacy coaches at the, at our elementary school. They've been sharing two, two math coaches over the last few years. And at the middle school that we haven't had any interventionist or coaches. So by adding three in this area, we'll be able to increase most elementary schools to, to a full coach in math. And also be able to provide some of that work at the, at the middle school as well. That's also just to, to, to address a, a concern raised at the last BNF meeting. That's also one of the areas that really will help support O'Malley's Sustainable Improvement Plan as well, is on literacy and on, you know, interventions, I mean. And the last area, just in terms of positions, is information technology. I'll go into that and explain, show you a little bit more about just the recent investments that all of you have made. And the risk we face if we don't make sure they're, they're being supported well. So let me go, I'll go, that'll be in a few slides. All these other priority areas in terms of program increases. So these are expenditures. Some on supplies, a lot of professional development, some on services as well. I mentioned about the collaborative assessment of student learning, a real key instrument in understanding how our kids are progressing throughout the year. And we explained to you the STAR three sixty assessment, which is, which was new this year. We want to continue doing that. Because it helps with targeted academic support and also really understand exactly the impact our teachers are having on our students and where our students need additional support. We are, we are also going to work on summer academies and remediate learning, learning gaps. We are getting some new information and new data just recently through the DIBELS. That actually, a couple of schools whose data I know about are actually doing, I only know about two schools and, but those two schools, these are elementary schools. Their DIBELS data, which is basically, you know, literacy, a literacy assessment is actually showing quite well, very good improvements this year, better than we might have expected, considering we're learning, you know, in the time of COVID and have shorter school days. So, but um, we still need to prepare to work with a lot of students during the summertime to remediate gaps, accelerate learning. And make sure they're ready for the new school year and ready to, to, you know, to, to step to the next level. Whether it's through absences, as we've reported to you. Or, 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 you know, just the, the shorter school day. There's a number of students we're concerned with and we're hoping is that, you know, by adding school time during the summer. We'll be able to keep those kids on track. and remediate any gaps there might be. We're also looking, just a quick aside, looking to work with G E F and get some funding from G E F to have a, a complimentary piece to that. So there's academics and also enrichment combined. And so looking at how we can identify perhaps a coordinator to, to get those programs, enrich our programs going as well in addition to academics. So kids can have more of a full day that's balanced. We're always wanting to strengthen our core instruction and we, and really the way to do that is through professional development, both time on early release days, time after school, time in the summertime. And we, as we've explained to you, we do that in a variety, variety of ways. More and more, we're doing that by paying our, our teachers stipends to plan, prepare and then, and then lead professional development. And that's valuable on many, many levels. They know our context here in Gloucester. They know their colleagues. They know what we've been doing and they, and that usually results in quite robust and very valuable professional development. I mean, also, but at the same time, we have to reach out when necessary to folks who have expertise that we don't have in-house. And so that's why we continue to invest in some professional development consultants. Translation services, it has really become crystal clear to us this year how we have to do a much better job communicating multiple languages, how our complicated websites or email electronic communications are challenging for fam, all families to understand. And so the ability to have continued translation services, not only grant funded, but in our operating budget is important. So we're going to increase that. And then, you know, we have, we haven't paid as good attention from our own budget around maintaining our buildings, furniture and infrastructure. So we have to continue to do that and I'll explain a little bit more on a, in a second on that. So let me just go through the last few slides here, just to highlight a few areas. In terms of maintaining our investment in technology, we're recommending that we increase our I T team by one, one position. The last position that we added was in two thousand seventeen. And but since then, we've added all these devices and more. So you can see almost fifteen hundred Chromebooks for staff and students since then. Most of that in the past, you know, twelve to fifteen months. But we also add and our I T team is also responsible for our phones, which are all internet based, our wireless network, as you know, and we're adding access points. These are important because they're the ones who install these and maintain them. They're also installing environmental monitoring units that's related to food services. Even saw recently intercoms and whenever we install something or add a device, we also have to maintain that device, that, that device. And then also we've been updating our, our network cabling in schools. The, the point really is you can't just adding these things also means that there's, you know, more insurance claims on things, more maintenance on things, more reports of failures. And at this point, the I T team is, is significantly taxed in a way that is, is sort of limiting our effectiveness. But it's, it's, it's sort of unrealistic for us to add all these components and not have the maintenance to, to and support to maintain them and to use them, use them well, make sure they're working. So that's the rationale for adding the I T position. And then just to dig into capital improvements a little bit. Literally tomorrow and Friday, we're continuing the process for capital planning, meeting with every principal to understand what their recommendations and suggestions are for capital improvements. Those are projects that the D P W might do during the summer or over the course of next year. But there are also things from, you know, furnishings or other projects that we could fund out of our, out of our own budget. Particularly in furniture replacement, we're seeing everything from cafeteria tables at O'Malley and, and the high school, which are, you know, broken or out of date or failing or, or just, you know, broken in a way. They're kind of being used, but they're not. They can be, you know, just put people at risk. But you see a few examples here, I think from shit curtains and curtains and shades, which haven't been addressed, addressed for a long time. Potential repaving on the side of Beeman School. These are just examples to give you of what's coming up. But we'll continue the, the planning and then create a list of priorities and timing on it. So we can get things in a timeline that either the D P W or ourselves can, can address in a timely, timely and organized fashion. But in order to do that, we do need to increase our own budget on, on capital, our own capital budget, budget that's separate from what the D P W has in their budget for our capital improvements, I was in addition to. And the last piece, which is really important, it's, it's the one area of the priorities that we're not actually recommending adding staff. And there's an important reason for that. And, and this very crowded slide is trying to get that across. Really, the primary reason is the committee and the district has made a, you know, significant investment in new positions and in training, new positions specifically over the last four years. That's new adjustment counselors specifically in four different schools. And then also train our counselors and school psychologists and some very significant areas of therapy. But now that we've actually have a full team for adjustment counselors, and as you know, we have psychologists in every school as well and counselors, guidance counselors as well, we have to make sure that we invest in those teams to make sure they're, that they're supported, that they have the time to work together and learn from each other. They have the professional development, learn to, you know, hone their craft and, and improve things, especially as things are adjusting and needs are developing with, with the pandemic. And also they have the structures in place where they actually can use that time well. So we're, while we won't be adding staff in this area, we will be adding some programs and some professional development monies. You saw professional development part of that will go towards these folks. One important area we're recommending is establish a program leader for the adjustment counselor team. That's someone who can organize that team, make sure the team is, you know, support them, advocate for them, but also, you know, help develop high quality professional development on early release days or other times. But really, without that, it's sort of been doing, doing a little bit about that by sort of hook or by crook. But we want, we want to formalize that structure to support that team very well now that they have a full team. We want to continue the professional development, continue twice monthly meetings between psychologists and counselors and make, make those, increase the effectiveness of those meetings where they're together, they're troubleshooting challenges, either teacher teams or maybe having with students or students are having. We certainly want to strengthen our guidance, support, guidance counseling support for after high school planning, whether kids are on the path towards employment or towards college. And then also, also want to add some more training for these folks and others to support our students as we return to the pandemic. Those could be students who are rising first graders and actually have never been in, in school. Those might be staff who are returning from being out. But also, also a general, general, general population of staff and students. So just the, the point being here that we have a team now in place, a full team in terms of psychologists and adjustment counselors. We want to continue to invest in them so they can do their work more effectively that they're continuing to develop and strengthen their team and, and obviously strengthening student support. Where all that leads us is just in terms of what we typically want to be within Gloucester is, is sort of in the middle of pack, in the middle of the pack in a few places, one per pupil expenses. And then, and the most recent data we have for F Y nineteen, we are. And we presume that this budget would keep us there. And another area is just looking at our expenditures by school, you know, by per pupil. These ever, won't ever quite be even because a large part of this, as you know, because it's staffing, it depends on sort of the, what's the status of the staff, are the newer staff, more veteran staff? Do they have specific special education programs? But always do want to show you just specifically how, you know, where we are in terms of, of cost per, per student, per school locally here. The last piece, and then, then we'll open up to questions is discontingency. So I mentioned that at this point, we're planning for a normal year, but there are contingencies we're considering and have in our mind and will continue to develop as things go forward. So for example, planning and budgeting for remote academy, we, we will plan a budget for that based on grants that we'll have access to. The good news here is we've done it, we've been doing it this year. And so we have a much better idea what that really means to pull that off. I do want to say this is that if we do have a remote academy next year, especially K to five, we may be able to trim some staff, but at this point, those class sizes are still quite large. We probably would have the, you know, really the same number of teachers in, in a K to five remote, remote academy, even if it's substantially smaller. We might be able to trim some staff in terms of support areas, but, but, um, you know, it's still be, if we have your remote academy next year, it'll still be staff intensive and, and also pretty, pretty expensive. And there may be other contingencies based on desert requirements. We won't know those. Hopefully we'll know those in the early summer, but we don't know those yet. That of course depends on just the, the path of the pandemic. There's a possible food service deficit based on how we do food services next year. As you know, food services this year are, while we're doing quite well at the elementary and middle school, not quite as well in terms of the food we're, you know, and meals we're serving. If we have to continue to do it this way, where we have, you know, fewer meals being bought, fewer à la carte items or no à la carte items being offered, that could, could cause a deficit in food service that we have to address through the revolving fund. So that's a, an area we're looking closely at. And then just planning for COVID grant expenditures. So as those grants come in and we see what's available to us, if it's beyond that, almost two million dollars, we have their expenditures that, you know, remote academy, P P E, cleaning. But also those are areas as well that we may be able to shift some costs to grants and be able to put on our operating budget, some of the, you know, additional areas to support the Sustainable Improvement Plans for O'Malley and G H S. So I've spoken quite a bit. Next steps. Or the next immediate step, as we mentioned, is reviewing the budget book on February twenty second and then going from there. So let me, let me pause, see if there are questions here. I can re, put up slides if folks want to look at something again, but for now we can just see everyone on the, on the grid here.
Any questions? Well. Okay, Joel.
The basic accounting question for Gary that I can't seem to do in my head. But if, if every year health insurance is going up by, you know, an average of eight percent, then every year health insurance becomes a larger percentage of our budget in general, which means that every year the increase we're getting is actually going down. So if we, if we stayed level at a two point eight percent year over year budget for the next ten years, every year of that, assuming health insurance moved in the same direction, we'd actually be getting a smaller and smaller and smaller increase every single year because health insurance is taking up more and more and more of that quote unquote two point eight percent every single year. Correct?
That is correct.
Just, you know, again, I said this before, but it just sounds like, you know, that sounds unsustainable and it sounds distorting. I would, you know, when, if and when we ever get back to, to normalcy and can think about, you know, administrative things like this. I really love to consider reorganizations that we join every other department in the city and have health insurance taken out of our budget. So our budget goes down by six million bucks. And then it's no longer something we have to wrestle with, what we're dealing with, whether we're going to hire teachers or buy desks or pay health insurance, or it just be the city pays for health insurance and then tells us what's left over for our various departments, including the schools.
It's definitely a challenge. The health insurance is definitely a challenge. And not only for our public school, but all the schools and all the organizations throughout the country. It's a, it's a difficult thing to balance the budget. When you got something going up faster than the inflation rate.
Right. I just think there's a lot of narrative out there about the schools, you know, we may understand it and certainly the city administration understands it, but think there's a lot of narrative out in the public that just sees, you know, the school's annual increase is beyond prop two and a half and is getting a bigger piece of the pie than everybody else, et cetera, et cetera. And it don't, you know, doesn't, doesn't help anybody, including, including us and including the citizens who we then, you know, go out and ask for an override and they say, you get almost three percent increase every year. Another department gets that and you need an override, yada, 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 right? So I just think some of those things where I would love in the future, if we could try and get that cleaned up.
Yeah, I think, I think, Joel, you know, one of the ways, one of the things I try to do, whether it's about our, you know, our E L programs or, or, or coaches or, or, you know, the, you know, the, the, the different pieces of that, different sort of areas we're working on is to help, not only help inform the committee, but also educate the public. I think this is another area where we can continue to work on educating the public about this real challenge, you know? And just the, the reality is that, you know, with health insurance increasing like it does and, and taking, you know, this essentially five hundred thousand dollars as the so-called increase, that what's left there then for us to actually invest in our programs, invest in our, our students is, is a significantly lower amount. So I'm, I'm happy to work with the committee on, on how do we keep on broadcasting this, keep on communicating it and keep in educating people on, on, on the, the, that, that very real challenge, which you pointed out. So thank you.
Well, it is a challenge, but you have to understand you're not a department, you're a separate entity. It's not a department. You can't compare department to department because none of my departments get forty two million dollars. Okay. So you can't compare departments. Okay. And you have more employees than the city. So you know what? We got to figure out how we can actually become one payer, work with the teachers, work with that, because that's what's happening. You've got some of us trying to save money. Some of us have a different kind of insurance and then someone who has the ultimate. And if we go back to the one single payer and be able to explain that to people, and then we know that out all across the board, that the increase would be nothing, minimal, because that's what you work in and that's what we need to do. We tried to do that, Joel, a matter of fact, years ago. I'm actually, Melissa and I also were on that and then I got thrown out because I'm not one of the peckers or whatever. But I understood that and we're trying to do the Blue Cross Blue Shield. I've been trying to get them. But like Gary said earlier, they go by Essex County is higher premiums. They think that we're sicker. And so that's what I kept saying, well, if we are sick Essex counties, so why aren't we getting more vaccines? You know, it's, it's like a catch twenty-two. And I've been actually, when we tried to, two thousand and fifteen, I tried to want to go back to the Blue Cross Blue Shield and I couldn't get the numbers. G I C wouldn't give me the numbers and so they played games and, and you know what? They, like last year was a little bit. I was on some of the calls that Gary was on as, as far as with the insurance going up and everything else and the questions. And you know, I don't even think they know what they're doing and that's the biggest fear right now. You know, they would talk about some seven percent and it depends what you're taking, you know? You got the G I C one, then it's higher. You got the Fallon one, then it's lower. So it all depends and they're not offering everything that what they used to. And we're looking at the copays and deductibles too. So, and I also asked Blue Cross Blue Shield again to give us a price. Last time it was like, can't do it. It was over three million dollars. So it wasn't for all of us. We didn't have it, but we're looking at that. But you really can't compare here apples and apples, oranges, oranges. What we could do is, and we've got to do, is figure out what we can do to cost save. And my whole biggest thing is why are we going with G I C? When we have curtains and we have the hospital and we have all of us, why aren't we going into one health plan? Which we could, we could actually rule the insurance companies. So I'm looking into that too.
Any other questions? Our comments. Okay. Well, this is just the, the, the first shot at this budget. It will, as we get more knowledge about what, what, we're talking about health costs right now, and we really don't even know where they're going to be. We're, we're just guessing. We're going on historical information. We don't know about grants. We don't know whether we're going to have to have a remote academy next year. There's a lot of things that we don't know going forward, but we will adapt as we go along. And you got to start someplace and this is where we start. So thank you for the presentation. And we will, if there's no questions, we'll move on to, let's see what's next, committee reports, but we don't have any, I don't think. No, no committee reports, right? So we'll move on to action items. And the first one is the Gloucester Education Foundation Grant in the amount of six thousand dollars for the old O'Malley Innovation Middle School Science Center. And I so move.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay. Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
And Mayor Taken?
Yes.
It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The next one is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Coronavirus Prevention Fund Distribution Grant in the amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred dollars. And I so move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none. Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope? Chairman Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
And Mayor Taken?
Yes.
It passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we have three votes on issues that bargaining agreements that we've already reviewed in, in executive session. And this is our opportunity to vote them in public. And the first one is to vote to the approve. Approve the memorandum of agreement with the Teamsters Local Union 42 Transportation for Success or Collective Bargain Agreement. Effective July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2021.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay. Maria, roll call vote?
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
And Mayor Taken?
Present.
It passes us six in favor and one present. Thank you. The next one is to vote to approve the memorandum of agreement with the Teamsters Local Union 42 Transportation for Success Collective Bargain Agreement effective July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2023.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just so everyone knows, I don't want people to think that I, I, I don't approve things. The fact is I am mayor and I have my own budget and I have the other side and we all do the negotiation. So I vote present. So this way, if you come for more money, I can say, I didn't vote for it. No, I'm kidding. I have to vote present. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Maria, could we get a roll call vote?
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
And Mayor Taken?
Present.
Okay. Carrie, six in favor, one present. Thank you very much. The next is to vote to approve the non-union administrators' salaries. And I so move.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
I do. I want to thank them. I really do. I know that, you know, this was in their contracts and I know it was supposed to come and I know Ben was, you know, you all wanted it and I says, please give me some time until I can get the budget of, well, actually the, what we have for the, you know, the stabilization free cash and everything else. And you all waited and I want to thank you. That really means a lot to me. Because we had some issues on the city side and it just proved that we are a team right now that we have a pandemic and we don't know what's going on in the state. So I want to thank you, even though I'm going to vote present, but I still want to thank you for waiting and be patient. So thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Jonathan, can I just expand on who these, on who these folks are? Is that okay? Sure. So these are non-union personnel. These are administrators and they have a variety of folks, principals, deans, vice principals. Our IT team. Director of EL in Title I. I'm, I'm missing some obviously, but there, there are folks who are. This is a cold increase. It's in alignment with what, what was negotiated with GTA. And so it's, I just want to sort of give both the scale to the public. Of course, the committee knows just the scale of the public, but also sort of name some of these folks. All our folks, including these folks who are working really hard this year, and this is a core increase for this fiscal year, for just this one year.
Any further discussion? Maria, could get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
No.
Ms. Chairman Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
And Mayor Taken?
Present.
Okay. It passes five in favor, one opposed and one present. Thank you. And that's the, oh, we were going to take up under action the sending a letter to the governor as well as.
Excuse me. Did you say five in favor?
Kathy's not, Kathy's not here.
Oh, Kathy's not here?
Yeah, she had to leave.
So if it didn't pass, I'll change my vote because I want.
Four in favor, so it passes. Excuse me. I didn't even notice that Kathy had disappeared. That's.
Well, that's kind of sad.
I know.
Especially when I was like two hours ago.
Yeah. So we'll need to change all of those vote catalys for the, all of those last votes and decrease them in favor by one. And in the, this past voted was four in favor, one opposed and one present, which is still carries. Sorry about that. Which is why we're going to take up this next issue, which is, this meeting start time. And, and as well as scheduling a workshop. So. It is, has been brought up that. Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but it, I think right before that you were starting to talk about the letter we were.
Oh, right, right, right. Okay. So the, during communications, we said that we would consider writing a letter to Governor Baker as well as to our state representatives. I'm not sure who else. It has some say in this. Maybe the mayor knows who, who else we should send this to. But would be a letter to request that teachers and people who work in the school system that have direct contact with students. Be moved up in the in the, the, the phase of, of getting COVID vaccinations. And we would ask probably Laura and Ben to collaborate on writing that letter.
Jonathan, can I interrupt and say that MASC sent out an email, I'm assuming it went to all of us because we're all members. Back on, it looks like February 8th. That where the Framingham School Committee did a resolution.
Right.
And the language in it was excellent. So if, I don't know if Laura has it or not. I mean, I guess it came from MASC, but if we follow something like that, we all agree to it. I think the language was excellent and proper.
It, it, I actually looked at that at the beginning of this meeting when this came up and it, the language is good, but the, the letter is not exactly what we want to do. They're also talking about their graduating class getting vaccinated. In that letter.
Right. Anyone over 16, right?
Yeah, it looked like they were specifically talking, right? But I think my understanding and correct me if I'm wrong, if, is that we want to target this to school, school staff and people with, with direct experience, direct contact with students. Is that right?
That's my impression, but I'm open up to whatever people want to do.
So I'm happy to take from that letter and work with Ben and look at also the letter that the North Shore Superintendent's and the Union sent. Which I think, you know, is also a really good resource. And then what's the procedure to bring it back to the committee for agreement?
Well. Technically, we'd have to bring it back at a meeting, but.
When is the enough meeting? Isn't it next week?
No, it's not till Monday, next week's vacation week. So they cut it off till the Monday, a week from Monday. But we, I believe that we could approve if we have, if we set the criteria of what we want to say in it and, and agree to that, that we could approve the, that, the, the letter.
I have confidence in Laura and Ben to, to distill what we say tonight into a letter. I don't think I need to see it again before sending it out, but that's just me.
I, I agree with Joel on that. It's, you know, I think there's hopefully it will help. Hopefully if they get enough of these things, they'll, it'll move up, but I think essentially the biggest problem right now is they don't have enough vaccine.
I think.
You just opened it up that if you are going to take, you're one of the, like a caregiver or not even if you are, I'm taking my grandmother to go get her vaccine, I can get mine. Right. So let's go buddy up all our teachers quickly with seniors.
So just to be clear, so my understanding is we are, we are advocating for school employees with direct contact with students to be moved up. Direct in-person contact. So we're not.
So in other words, the, the teachers that are teaching remotely. But the teach, are, are different than the teachers who are teaching in person.
Okay. And not just teachers, but I'm assuming any school staff.
Drivers, aides.
Aides.
Nurses have already been.
Right.
Janitors. I don't, I don't know. Who else?
Okay.
You're, you're talking to everybody except for people, although I, their contact, but no, but you're, you're talking, I mean, you're, you're essentially, everyone in our schools has direct contact with students.
Right.
Everyone who's physically present in the schools.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. I will write that and I will contact you about it, Ben. Is that okay?
Yes, I, I, I have lots of faith in your ability to write this, Laura.
I'm, I do too, but.
And I'm happy to review and any help I can, I can offer. Absolutely.
Thank you. So let me tell you something. You're putting it too broad. Okay. I don't want to be rude. And I'm going to tell you, you can put everyone in school, but that's a little bit too much. And then someone says, what about this? What about that? Like Ben said, well, I'm in there once in a while. So how are you going to define that? How are you going to do that? Whatever. And then it's going to be one, two, three. Can we, I'm sorry. I don't want to be rude to anyone. I know that, you know, people are going to freak out, but we need to focus right now on the teachers. And the, you know, the paraprofessionals are in that classroom. Like, you know, I know cafeteria workers are, all my janitors are in there and someone, whatever. But how are you going to say what phase? Then they'll say, okay, then phase one, paraprofessional, then we're back to square one. Because Ben just brought a good point. What about me? I walk in the school. So how do you classify like who, who's, I know I'm only kid in bed, but I'm saying others will. That's already been brought up. That's why you end up going face to face to face to face. So my suggestion earlier was, is we need to really tell them that we have been in school, our teachers have been in school. You know, they're right there all the time, you, you know. I love my bus drivers. They get them to school, but they're not there, you know, they're not all day or five hours or four hours, whatever. We need to really protect right now, the basic that we have. We're not asking him, they're already on phase two. Okay. They're already there. We're just saying, you know what? Push them up a little. Everyone else is not on phase two until after or whatever, but we'll, we'll get there. But I really don't think that if we start saying everything. You know, you can say and ask it and then say we're defending it, but I really want to push that we have active teachers in school. They've been there 90 days. Put themselves there. We need to get them vaccinated. You know, I mean, you, you're, 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 we just said it, one teacher, one, you know, one coach, 40 kids. Examples, you know what I mean? So we really need to make sure that everyone's protected and I understand about your cafeteria workers, your bus drivers and all that. Believe me, I want my janitors, I want my, I want my DPW. I thought they should be with the front liners too. Because they're out there with them, but you know what? We need to make sure that our teachers, because you know what? By the time they're done, truthfully, or everyone else, it's not going to be until the end of school year. And that's ridiculous. So it's, it's just, we need to push it. We really do. So, and I'm hoping that when everyone, because all of a sudden they went from 100 child border health, somehow these pharmacies are getting whatever. Pediatrics offers and don't, I'm not complaining, 300 there, 300 there. You know what? If we can get, you know, some of these pharmacies to come this way and start giving. Well, I, I think that we should say that, you know, this is our population and it's great that all the others, 75 plus, 100 and they're going everywhere else, but can we start now moving forward? Just that, that now let's do the 65. We'd be able to do it faster, but this delay. It, it's, it's, it's just getting me upset. So. There, I said my piece.
May I, do you?
Thank you.
Just to piggyback on that, one of the better arguments that I've heard recently on the radio about vaccinating teachers is just how big the return on investment is, right? Because they have contact with 30 kids or more. And then those kids' families are more protected. So the point of contact is so broad. That it really helps to protect sort of the greater community more than some other populations. And I think that's really important for us to realize because they are coming in contact with 30 or more kids, high schools coming in contact with even more than that. So the return on investment is huge. Not just in terms of like health, but just in how, how much it will impact the community in reducing spread and exposure.
I struggle with the idea of doing teachers and not parents because we have parents acting as teachers.
She said that anybody.
When you say that.
And parents.
Okay. I thought the bounty said just teachers.
No, no, but you know, they, they are, they're teaching them in a classroom. I, I don't want to, like, I don't care about anyone else. It's not, that's not the point. The point is we need to focus on right now that phase just to move it faster. That's all we're asking for. Okay? And then the next phase, move it faster, because I understand where we want and, and I love my seniors. Is to get the 75-year-olds plus, and now he extended it because he wanted them to get in. Some people were afraid that if you're taking someone and making that appointment. Then you can get the vaccine. Okay. So if he would have said that earlier, I would have paid every single person up with all our seniors that would have ran up to Denver or something. But the fact is, you know what? If he can do that, then he can do a little bit more. So you know what? And I'm hoping that with all of us sending letters, that within a week to two, he changes it again and they can go in and get theirs. With the 65-year-olds. I mean, because you know what? It's, I can understand, but people are sick. You're 65 and you, you know, you have something wrong. Don't get me wrong. You need it. But so do our teachers because they can be given it to their, their elderly. They can be given it to someone else. So it's like, we need to protect them. Because they are more with other people than we are.
So as I write this, I'm going to write it teachers, paraprofessionals. So the question is principals? I mean, I'm just, I just want to be really clear.
Yeah, you, you, I'm sorry. Principal, absolutely. Principals are with kids all the time.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I'm assuming. So, okay. And then.
It's school-based staff. I don't, I'm not sure you could do a school-based staff.
Yeah. Okay. That's what I was, okay, good.
Okay.
I mean, you know what? And you got, you have Uber, you know, Uber people getting plow drivers for hospitals, Uber. You know what? I mean, okay, don't get me wrong. I'm not saying that no one deserves it. But I'm just saying that, you know what? These teachers did a risk. They believed in us. And you know what? I, I'm just upset that I thought they'd be in phase one, at the end of phase one, you know, but hey, that's what we all hope for.
So we're going to take a vote on this and the vote is going to be to authorize some Laura to, to craft a letter urging. And the mayor should help us in who we send this to besides Governor Baker. It isn't solely him that makes this decision.
Utters. And Governor Baker. And then they, they have a team. So as long as, you know, Secretary Settis has it. And we can also, you know, Riley can send a copy saying this is, you should be defending us. You had the commissary school, you should be defending us.
Right.
Okay. You know, we need your help here.
But as far as you, you'll help with.
Absolutely. I'll get you the, I'll get you the.
Urging them to move up to a higher phase, teachers.
And like I said, all teachers, thank you God, but it has to be the ones who are actually in school. So we, we can, you know what? We can actually push it. I really seriously think that if all the ones who were saying, you know what, just the ones who have been in school. They have been in school. I'm not saying the ones who come into school now. Okay. I'm sorry, but I'm saying the ones who've been in school since September and going and they've been on it. And we've done everything you asked for. You use us as an examples? Come on. Give it, you know what? Yeah, I'm going to calm down now.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a clear motion so that for the record that when, when we vote that it's not 20 pages long. So that we, we authorize Laura to craft a letter to the appropriate personnel, of, of state administrators. Urging them to have in, in-school staff moved up in the phases for vaccination. Second. Okay. Any discussion? Any further discussion?
Just say, look, when everyone else was yellow and red and they jumped away, our teachers stood. So you know what? You use Gloucester as a little example here. Well, we're giving you an example. Give us our vaccines.
Well, and you'll deliver this for us personally, right?
You know, I have no problem doing that. I have no problem doing that.
Thanks. Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Okay, passes unanimously, six in favor. Um the second issue here on is it's been brought up that we need to schedule our annual workshop on procedures, protocols and policy regarding school committee. And I've talked to Dorothy Presser, I well, I talked to Glenn Kucha and Dorothy Pres- Presler. Um and the dates that they have available or dates that she has available, because she would be the one doing it, uh is um the first Wednesday or the last Wednesday, the fifth Wednesday in um in March. So I can tell you what those are, but we don't have meetings, those those Wednesdays, and and I think it's good to keep it on Wednesday, because people generally have those.
So it'd be the third or the thirty-first?
The third of the thirty-first, correct. So is there any preference? Laura?
I prefer the third.
Okay.
Me too.
All right. So without objection, I will schedule a meeting, um a workshop, and I'm going to suggest that we start that at at six o'clock.
Yes, please.
All right. Um the next issue is our school committee meeting start times. Um the it was brought up and rightfully so that we um schedule um executive sessions for the end of the meetings. Uh oftentimes, um what's happening in executive session is of of very, very important, that's it, and um and it ends up being very late at night. And so the question is, do we want to change our start time? Do we want to start, change when we have executive sessions? Those are those are the two issues at time, and I'll just open it up for discussion. Laura, you brought this up, so would you like to start?
Um, sure, thank you. Um I know that some people can't make an earlier start time, so I know that that's hard, having a six o'clock start time. Um but I do feel it's important that we not be going past eleven o'clock regularly, especially on important issues, as I as I said. So um so one idea is is to schedule executive sessions for before our meetings. Um or on different nights. So that we can give it the full attention that it deserves.
Okay, anyone else?
No, I agree with that, either do it before. Um because they would do sometimes in city council, they would do it before, or you can schedule a different night, but or or and and you can do it during the day if it's, you know, executive session, but um I haven't, I like I said, if I have enough time in advance notice, we and we set a time, then I can change my schedule around. But um as far as um eleven o'clock, you know what? Yeah, especially on important issues when someone really were exhausted, and we've already had a hot day, and we've all been working, so um I agree with Laura on that one.
Okay, uh Melissa, then Joel, then Sam.
So um I did some research, I I sent it to Jo- to Jonathan and Ben of um like fifteen different surrounding communities and found that majority start at seven. Um and there's reasons for that, that we'll hear from Dorothy Presler probably if we talk about it there. Um but I don't, I don't want to start our meetings any earlier than seven, but do agree that um if we're going to have executive session that is a long executive session as opposed to something for a half hour, that we would have it before the meeting and start it a little bit earlier. But I mean, I think we can agree, we really haven't gone past eleven before COVID, and COVID is consuming our conversations. Whenever Karen Carroll is on, there's easily to plan an hour and a half of questions. I mean, I think it's awesome that we have direct contact with uh our public nurse. I don't know how many school committees get that opportunity, but we're very fortunate to have that, and we take advantage of it, and rightfully so. Um but I have to believe when the world gets back to normal, that we're not going to go past eleven too often, and we shouldn't. That's why we have policies in place that allow us to go past eleven once with a majority vote, and then no further unless everyone agrees. Um but with summer hours and common things, with summer hours coming, and if we're going to get back to open meetings, six o'clock isn't reasonable to start a meeting when people work. And people do work, and we are going back to work, so um I just want to acknowledge the fact that we have meetings at the convenience of the public, not just us, and people's lives do go on, and not everybody's available at five o'clock um to start meetings. You know, subcommittee is one thing, but um many people in the world work till five or six o'clock and have kids to feed and things like that. So starting meetings earlier than that, especially when we're going to get back to in-person meetings, I I would not support. I think seven o'clock is appropriate.
She said, yeah, but she didn't say that, start at seven, do what you need to do, but do the executive session first instead of after.
If it's a, if it's not a long one, you know, not everything
If it's a long one, do it a different day.
Right, yeah, exactly. We can manage that. All agendas are managed through a chair, a chairperson can manage any of this.
Joel?
Yeah, I I agree with Melissa, and I think the research, I haven't seen the research she she did, but I imagine it's very similar to what I've seen, starting at seven, I think um is for the public's benefit. Um and it needs to stay that way. I think that you know, always having the silver lining of this COVID situation is that the meeting that we're having right now, depending on what permanent changes are made to the open meeting law, this format enables us to have an executive session outside of a regular meeting in a much more convenient way. Um and so I think that if executive sessions were divorced from our actual meetings, executive sessions are inherently private and do not need to be for the convenience of the public. And so depending on, then it just becomes the convenience and the availability of us, the members, and what our work schedules and our personal schedules will allow. And so and so I would, you know, or think that, at least while we're still doing remote meetings like this, and for as long as we can do remote meetings like this, we would just divorce them from the school committee, have school committee start at seven, and this could be, you know, um you know, a wider variety of times that have no relation to what our typical meetings would be if our personal schedules would allow.
Okay, Samantha?
Yeah, I'm in favor of um separating it completely from our meeting days. I think it's nice to not be you know, I if we have an executive session before a meeting, we might have to stop too soon. Um if we have it after a meeting, it might be too late. So I think having it on a separate day just gives us some more flexibility and gives the topic the time that it deserves and needs. And I'm a, I'm not opposed to starting at seven, I think that that's fine.
All right, so um what I'm hearing, and and I think everybody is is voiced this, uh is that we keep the seven o'clock start time, we take executive sessions as they arrive and schedule them separately. If if it's something that's going, we is just approval or something, that is not, we know, we can foresee that it's only going to be a you know, fifteen, twenty-minute thing, we could schedule that before the meeting. But if it's going to take, it's going to be of debate, there's going to be debate taking place, then we'll just schedule it on a separate night. Is that what everybody's?
Yeah.
Okay. Um we can uh, we can, we we can, when we do our governance meeting, because ours actually, a format for our our agendas is written in our policies, and we let, we can change it then uh when we do it, but for now, that's what we'll do. I'd also like to, I have, when we do the governance meeting, I'd like to consider um somehow um putting a limit on debate. Um I've been watching this, these, the guys in Washington, and they seem to they allow four hours for 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 a debate, and they stick to it. I think sometimes we just go on and on, uh when everybody's really already made up their mind on what they're going to vote, so it's just something to consider, not saying we're bringing it up now. Um but we can talk about it at at the governance meeting.
Bring Robert's rules, there's some guidelines in there as to what the limits are, and we can, we are allowed to modify, to expand or reduce.
Yeah. Melissa?
I then, um I circulated a document that was like an old MASC document, and I circulated mostly for the last two pages, because it was a checklist of topics that schools committees can talk about at a governance meeting. And I I personally found it helpful that if we filled it out and maybe sent it to you, um you'd get an idea of some of the issues that we as individuals have concerns about, like how to get something on of agenda, um how we function as a committee, things that it generate, this checklist would generate conversations about issues that we probably share concerns about. And it might help you to talk to Dorothy about it before the meeting to give us um direction in the conversation as opposed to it being a free-for-all when we sit down as a workshop.
Yeah, I was, I was going to suggest something like that. I was going to send out our procedures prot- protocols and policies and have everybody um sort of in advance, let me know what subjects they would like to concentrate on.
Yeah, I think this checklist has other things on it, too, that might um might need to be thought about, that should be in our operating protocols.
Did you just send it out now?
I sent it out the other day, and I can send it out again, or Jonathan has it, I um
I'll send, I'll make sure everybody gets it out in the next couple of days.
It was more or less the last two pages, because like I said, I think it was from two thousand thirteen, so I'm not sure of the language, it was just the checklist I thought was good to
Okay.
Assist.
Okay, anything more on on that? Okay, then, uh would um an update on the um the building project? Kathy's not here, uh we have a meeting tomorrow. I can
Jonathan, do you want me to just go over the agenda quickly?
Yeah, okay, I was just going to find the agenda and go over.
So um uh so uh there'll be update on Swing Space, um I'll just give you update update quickly now, so we're we're started, we're prepared, doing the preparations to negotiate the lease with uh St. Anne's um building, we'll talk about building safety in two parts about building safety, one, the design elements that are built in to the to the facility, um helping with safety. Um that's everything from, you know, access um or limiting access, doorways. Uh and then also developing other part of uh site safety is developing the uh safety plan as well. We'll talk about the different components that are in the safety plan as well as timeline for creating that. Um we'll get update from the two subcommittees, exterior and interior subcommittees and the progress they're making. Uh just remind folks again about the schedule. We'll also begin talking about the salvage list, that's the items from each school, East Gloucester and veterans that um folks want to, you know, either memorialize or bring over to the new building. Um and so we'll share, that's a list that's been developed by um, you know, by the two schools. Um and then also, once the building committee gets a look at it, um I will share it with you, and then I think they'll share with the bill with the two school communities, so they can um we can finalize it uh early, early March. And that's, you know, we'll we'll share that with you, so you see it, and also so the committee here can um make other suggestions if if you want to. Uh and that's, uh and then other just business about going over, I think, approving invoices and the like. Uh so that's the agenda for tomorrow's night, for tonight's meeting.
Melissa? You have the agenda? Okay. All right, just so so people clear what the salvage list is, it's it's the sort of thing like um at West Parish, they saved the Connor Stone from the original school or and things like that. You know, at at uh, you know, if different rooms have been dedicated to um different, different people, if somebody planted a tree or a shrub in in memorial of some teacher or student, then that, those are the kinds of things we're talking about.
Thank you, Joel.
Anything else before we adjourn? Joel?
Thanks, I wanted to bring this up for a couple of reasons. I actually got requests from multiple parents to bring this up, and I I think it's true also. So um I'm a vet's parent, and I want to first thank Principal Fusco, and you know, if this committee is not aware, he is outside every morning in a neon jacket, and every afternoon dismissal on a neon jacket, literally directing traffic. He is helping people cross the street safely, he's helping cars getting in and out safely. Um and he's helping the flow of traffic on Webster Street. However, and I fully believe, and I think every parent that goes out there fully believes, he is making it markedly safer and better than it would be without him there. That being said, where the lawyer in me gets involved is going, I think that is an unsafe situation for him to be in, and I think we should refer to BNF requesting a police detail for the rest of the year for two big reasons. Um related to liability, one, if God forbid, Principal Fusco got hurt out there, he is outside his parameters of his of his, right, directing traffic is not what a principal should be doing. Secondly, God forbid, there was an accident or a parent or a student got hurt, even if pragmatically you'd say Principal Fusco is making it so much safer out there, he would be bringing liability onto the district beyond what would normally be there, because a district employee was controlling traffic when someone was hurt. So I just think that the need for what he's doing is absolutely there, and yet he is definitely making it a safer situation, but it really should be handled by a professional and professionals who do this in the city of the the uh police department. And so I'd just like to refer to BNF to discuss whether we can request a detail to do um traffic control for drop-off and dismissal for the rest of this year. Because as you might remember, there are no buses this year for veterans, so everybody is a walker or a drop-off.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's, we'll put that, I will remind Kathy to get that on the agenda for, seeing she's not here. For the meeting a week from Monday. Laura?
Um, just one last thing, um we discussed whether we wanted to bring to the committee whether this the school committee should be sending um condolence notes to school to school employees, families um from the school committee.
Right.
My understanding is we had to vote on that.
Well, I what I, you asked me about sending a um a letter of condolence on behalf of the school committee to um Tammy's um and um and um, I'm going to slip his name, the mechanic, because I'm family, and I, uh all I said was that we hadn't done it in the past, and I didn't want to just tell you to do it on my own. Um so um let's just open that up for discussion. Do do we want to um, as as a school committee, send out letters of condolence?
Absolutely.
To to staff members, families. Melissa, you?
Um, most definitely, always, and I don't, but I'd also like to add to something this committee doesn't do, but other committees I've been on have is um when teachers retire or staff retires, especially if they've worked over twenty years. Um I think it's nice to send out communications from the school committee as well. So it seems to me there's a list of things we can be giving Laura to 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 write, and I apologize. But I think there needs to be more interaction with our staff over good news and sad news.
Okay. Well, let's authorize her to to
I am, I give citations to our teachers. I get a list, and they give me all the ones who are retiring, and we send, I, from the city, I'm thankful. I send each one their own citation to say thank you.
No, that's great. I mean, that's from the mayor, but like, so
No, but I'm saying, instead of a small card, you could do one from the school committee, you guys have citations, you know.
Yeah, um another thing, when I, when I was on the tech, what we used to do is um accept the um accept the retirement, so we knew every time someone was retiring, because it doesn't happen that often, I mean, you have a couple a year. Um but that way, it brings public recognition to um our hard-working staff, so I I, I mean, it's a conversation for another day. Um but that's been something on my mind for a while, and I just think that's another way, like I said, to show appreciation to our staff.
Absolutely.
Okay, so let's just um without objection for the moment, authorize Laura to draft a a letter of condolence to um uh family members of of DC staff for the moment, and then we could talk about the rest of the expanding that service uh to um in the future, okay?
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
Anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm off.
Thank you.
Okay, Maria, roll call vote.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wiesen.
Yes.
Mr. Favaza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes, good night, everyone.
You're taken.
Yes, good night.
Okay. Good night, everyone. Thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned, and uh thank you.
Thank you, Laura. I feel I can't thank Laura enough tonight, for all the writing she's gonna do. Thank you.
Thanks.